Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled council meeting of the Apex Town Council for August 7th, 2018. I'd like to invite Councilman Norrie to open us with our invitation.
Yeah, thank you. Please vow. Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for this time that we get to openly and freely gather and make decisions for all of the people of Apex. I pray for your guidance tonight and your presence in this room can be felt. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Glad to see so many people here tonight. I wanted to go through a couple of quick things. First of all, you may notice that most of us have shed our jackets. It is summertime, so if you are wearing a jacket and you would like to take it off, please feel free. Make yourself comfortable. It is July, August, and we're going to keep doing this until Labor Day, so I hope you'll join us and just be comfortable while we work. Second thing is we have agendas out there on the podium, so if you're not accustomed to being here and you missed one, feel free to go grab it. It looks like this, stapled pieces of paper. And lastly, if you intend to speak at one of the public hearings tonight, I want to make sure there are two things you know about, and they're both yellow. One is to get the guidelines, and that's on the podium as well. Those help you know what rules to follow during the public speaking opportunities, which would involve this podium up here. The second is if you intend to speak, you need to sign your name on the appropriate yellow sheet that's along the ledge there. The town clerk will be picking those up in about eight minutes and will be bringing them to me. So now's your opportunity. Feel free to get up and go do that sometime in the next eight minutes. We now move to the time of presentations, and presentation number one is one that I'm looking forward to. I spent Saturday morning at the Apex Farmers Market and was looking for... There we go. And I enjoyed very much my time there. It was overcast, but nice weather and did not rain, and the wandering Moose Food Truck was there, and I enjoyed my Moose Brisket. I hope you get a chance to try that sometime as well. Part of why we're doing this is that this week is Apex Farmers Market Week, and so I have a proclamation. Alexis Jensen, you're here. Come on up. Come on up. She's the executive director and marketing manager for the Apex Farmers Market. And so Alexis, if you'll come stand right up here. Yeah, and you can just look out that way for a second. I'm going to read this, and then I'll come down and bring it down to you. Maybe town manager or somebody will have somebody get a picture for you. Or maybe you've got a photo. All right, so here's the proclamation. Whereas Apex, North Carolina, Wake County farmers and ranchers provide citizens with access to helpful, locally and regionally produced foods through farmers markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demand for a diverse array of agricultural products. And whereas farmers markets and other agricultural direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the U.S. economy. And whereas farmers markets serve as significant outlets by which small-to-medium, new-and-beginning, and veteran agricultural producers market agricultural products, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas Mayor Lance Olive recognizes this importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers generating farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections through rural and urban linkages. Now therefore, to further the awareness of farmers market contributions to Apex, North Carolina, in Wake County, I, Lance Olive, Mayor of Apex, do hereby proclaim the week of August 5th through 11th, 2018, as Apex, North Carolina, and Wake County Farmers Market Week, in conjunction with the observance of National Farmers Market Week. I call upon Apex, North Carolina, and Wake County citizens to celebrate their local farmers markets with appropriate observances and activities, and go buy yourself some hot peppers. Congratulations. Do you want to say anything?
Thank you so much, everybody. This is a huge community of people. We've got a bunch of them back here. It's the people in the market, it's the people at home working tirelessly, it's everybody. It's the whole community. So thank you so much for this, and come on out on the left. Thank you.
And it's hard for me to think about the farmers market without remembering my own childhood. As a 12-year-old, I had a rule before I could go swim in the public swimming pool, I had to go collect one large grocery bag of vegetables and take them downtown Apex and sell them. Every Saturday I did that. We had just about every vegetable you can imagine.
You're the original.
Well, I may not have been the original, but I certainly participated, that's for sure. Thank you all for coming out. Presentation number two is from our senior transportation engineer, Russell Dalton, and he has some findings on the Apex Peakway Southeast Connector feasibility study.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you may remember, last year we embarked on a feasibility study. I'm here tonight to present the...did it vanish? I don't know what happened. I represent the findings of our feasibility study that began last year. And first of all, our project purpose was to complete that last of the two missing gaps of the Apex Peakway. As you all know, the current missing gap, the Southwest Corridor, is in final design. This would be the final gap. It'll provide improved mobility and connectivity as a loop around downtown Apex, first included in our transportation plan in 2002, but plans, you know, in the concept stage date back to 1965. This feasibility study was performed by Kimley Hornum Associates. The, you know, purpose of this was to prepare a functional design with estimated costs, gather citizen input, and identify any major issues we might encounter during the project. It cost us about $95,000. Included in this effort was data collection, traffic analysis, feasibility design, public involvement, environmental screening, and a feasibility study report, which we're about to wrap up. Description of this project, we're extending the Apex Peakway from NC-55 right in the vicinity of where the Peakway comes out at 55 near the Walmart and Cambridge Village area. We're going to widen and realign existing portions of Shiflin Road to tie into this, which would eventually become Apex Peakway. One of the things we looked at in the beginning of the study was, you know, was there a way to phase the design? In other words, come in with a four-lane divided section from 55 to Shiflin with the realignment in there, maybe keep existing Shiflin two-lane, or maybe convert to three-lane, and eventually widen that in the future. One thing we found through the study is you really need to do the whole four-lane widening all at one time, just because of the traffic demand that's out there. And actually, our traffic model, the results we had from that showed a little bit lower traffic than were in the NC-55 TIP project that DOT is currently doing. They're projecting even higher volumes on that section of the Peakway. And as included in this is the existing Peakway cross-section. You have the 10-foot side path, a multi-use path, whatever you'd like to call it, you know, wide outside travel lanes, which would be 11-foot inside, 13-foot outside lanes, and a five-foot sidewalk. Currently, the only ultimate section of Peakway we have is between NC-55 and Hughes Street before it tapers out in front of the Walmart. That's the section where you see the landscape median, you see the multi-use path on the inside, you see the sidewalk on the outside. That's what eventually the whole Peakway should look like. This gives you just an overview of the area. It's an aerial. If you look at this, these lines represent, first of all, the Peakway alignment on new alignment as it curves northward from NC-55. In this area, because of where the existing trailer park is located, it would actually cut through a portion of that where those streets would need to be realigned and reconnected. In this, we also ended up realigning James Street southward to tie in at a four-leg intersection. Shiflin Road would actually curve northward and tie in with that intersection at James Street. And then the Peakway would continue northward to the point where it would tie into existing Shiflin Road and travel north along the existing center line of Shiflin Road all the way up to Center Street. This is the typical section, and again, this is like what you have between NC-55 and Hughes Street over near the Walmart before it tapers out. You've got two travel lanes in each direction, 11-foot inside and 13-foot outside lanes, which helps a little bit with cyclists, for vehicles able to get over, you know, when cyclists are actually on the road versus being on the path. And it's our typical section that we currently have in our standards and details. Now, we had a public open house on November 2nd. 27 people showed up, but we also had a project survey, and we got 82 respondents to that survey. Overall, it was favorable for the design, and overall, people assigned it as a high-priority project. Wake County Public Schools said it was beneficial to their bus transportation. Police EMS and fire all said it was a positive impact on their emergency services for connectivity and mobility around that area. I'm going to go through three of the questions, but first of all, how would the project affect you? You can see in this chart, there's 70% of the people said it would affect them somewhat positively or very positively, and again, that's out of 82 people that responded. You said you had 15% of those saying it wouldn't affect them at all, and then you've got about 13% or so that say it would affect them negatively to some degree, and then 2% did not respond to that question. Next one, what priority would you assign to this project in thinking about all the transportation needs in Apex? As you can see here, 53% assigned it high priority, which would be very important within the next five years. 29% said medium priority in the next five to 10 years, and then you had about 7% saying it was a low priority. 11% did not respond to the question. And then finally, this is the third question, and we had other questions. We're only going through three of those, I'd say, the most important questions tonight. What do you think about the proposed design that we presented at the public workshop? 65% said it was very good, and I was happy with that, and that we did a pretty good job working with our consultant to get a good design out there. 8% said it needs some work, which is not surprising at functional design stage. There might be some refinement once you go into preliminary and final design. And then 4% said not good, so for whatever reason, they didn't like the design. 23% did not respond to the question. Now, I'm going to go through three slides that give you an overview of the design. I hope you can sort of see what's on here. I know the line work may be tough to see in the image, but as the Peakway comes off to 55, you've got a median-divided section here, you've got a dual-left turn lane exiting, you've got a through-and-through-right exiting, two lanes inbound. You have a landscaped median that begins around the area of Segram Street. Segram Street that goes into the trailer park would be converted, would be a right-in-right-out directly accessing the Peakway. When you get a little bit further north, you have what's called a Tanyard Drive, which connects to the existing townhome development, which is currently stubbed out, so that would have a direct connection and a right-in-right-out. Across the road is Gilby Road, which would then be right-in-right-out directly to the Peakway. And this access for the trailer park is not just to provide inconvenient access for the existing use, but also if it ever, you know, if any portion or the whole park ever redevelops, that provides opportunities as well for other land uses to access the Peakway. Then there are some street abandonments and realignments in this area where Markham Street would actually take a right angle and connect over to an intersection with Shiflin Road and Energy Drive before connecting to the Peakway. And this is where James Street would curve south and connect directly to the Peakway. So we're setting up our first full-movement intersection. It'd be a, you know, a four-leg intersection. It'd be pretty major, so I would expect a traffic signal probably would, we'd want to put it in there if we can. And that also would address some concerns people had about pedestrians being able to cross the roads. If you have a signalized intersection, it provides opportunities for a signalized crosswalk at that location. We also have some U-turn bulb-outs, because because of the median and other right-in-right-out access points, people that exit sometimes have to have a way to get back around. We minimize the size of these U-turn bulb-outs. They're designed for a, you know, relatively small truck. They're not designed for a large, tight tanker truck. Those would be expected to reroute or use the full-movement intersections to make left turns. And then beyond that, there's some other, there's a street tie-in, which might be easier to see in the next image, to some duplex developments here, which provides a frontage driveway access. Currently, they have access directly to the Peakway, and that's one of the things we want to do, is make sure we eliminate as many direct-access driveways as possible. You know, being a major thoroughfare, a four-lane divided roadway, we don't want to have residential driveway access. Further north, Olive Street would be converted to a right-in-right-out, and it's on a SKU as well, so that would help, you know, as a right-in-right-out with that alignment instead of a full movement, partly because, you know, it's so close to Investment Boulevard. We wanted to maintain that access. Olive Street has, you know, that area has other points of access to get up to a full movement, can backtrack and get back around to James. So Investment Boulevard was important to maintain access to the industrial area that doesn't have a lot of other good options and would have a lot of larger vehicles entering and exiting that intersection. Then we do have a commercial driveway access a little bit further north, and that would be a right-in-right-out. And then another right-in-right-out, and across the street to the west would be another right-in-right-out, and this is the church on the corner at Peakway at Center Street. And then we would finally tie back into Center Street. And this is where, again, we've maintained a four-lane divided section all the way through. We would, at this intersection, develop left and right lanes, you know, to satisfy traffic volumes at this location. And we plan to carry a second through lane through and drop it before getting to Old Raleigh Road, but I'll talk about that a little bit more later. This was our project terminus in the scope, but based on the traffic volumes, we had some findings coming out of the study. So any questions on the design as I go through real quick? I know it's a presentation, but if you have any burning questions, I don't want to leave you hanging.
How many people are displaced from the trailer park in this plan?
I think we had about a dozen roughly. I mean, it's functional design stage, so it's kind of hard to tell, but that's roughly what we had down there. We didn't have a whole lot of other relocations, but in that area, it's, I mean, we're cutting through the corner, and there's really no way to avoid that. That's one of the things we struggled with, because you're trying to tie in an appropriate curve before you get to 55, and as you push it north, you're also pushing it further, you're not only pushing it further into the townhome development, but you're also creating a geometric problem with that curve to tie into 55. So really, where it is is about as far north as you can shift it currently.
Center Street Grocery right there.
Yes.
Will that be, will that stay, or is that just right-of-way going into them, or what is that?
Um, it's, yeah, it shows, I mean, as it shows here, it's right up against the building, so it might make it difficult. I'm not sure what's going to happen with that with the state's TIP project as well, because they're widening Center Street, so that may have impact on it as well. So we'll be watching that project pretty closely, because whatever they do, you know, we'll be tying into that at some point in the future. And on this slide, sorry, my bullet icons didn't show up for some reason, but we've got two questions, two comments. Concerned about how long the project will take. Our response to that was, of course, funding for the construction has not yet been identified because, of course, cost overrun of Peakway Southwest, and just this project cost is more than was originally planned as well, with everything getting more expensive over time. And also, people were concerned there would be impacts, and obviously, there are with this. We'll minimize impacts where feasible, but we do anticipate relocations. We're hemmed in on this corridor. I mean, usually with an alternatives analysis feasibility study, you'd look at some different routes. With this, there's not a whole lot you can do. I mean, you're tying in with minimum curves at NC-55. You're having to tie back in pretty quickly with existing Shiflin Road, and then we're running right down the middle of Shiflin Road to try and minimize impacts on both sides of the road. We also ask why so many lanes are needed. In 2040, we're showing between 22,000 and 26,000 vehicles per day. That's still below capacity for a four-lane road, but it's above capacity for a three-lane road. So that was one of the concerns, is if you want this to work until 2040, which if you're going to spend the money to do it, you would, you're going to want a four-lane road from the beginning to end. The 22,000 is what we showed on the NC-55 end. The 26,000 was up at the Center Street end. But again, when the DOT looked at the NC-55 TIP project, when they did their traffic projections, their volumes were higher on the NC-55 end than we had. So it's, again, it's showing good justification for a four-lane road in either case. People did have a concern about pedestrian bicycle crossings, but as I pointed out, you know, the James Street intersection, the project, would be a good location for a signalized intersection, to provide signalized crosswalks. In between, we wouldn't recommend any more mid-block crossings that are unsignalized. So, you know, four-lane, major thoroughfare, we want to minimize uncontrolled crossings as much as possible on those roadways. And then the comments we received from people about the Peakway corridor, they asked, they wanted it to be, continue to be a higher priority, but we did explain the Southwest Connector is funded in final design with estimated construction beginning in May, so, you know, people are more interested, I think, in the Southwest Peakway Connector than this one, although they still, it still did say in the study, as you saw, they still thought it should be, if not a high priority, at least a medium priority in the next 10 years for, to complete the Peakway loop. And then other higher priority projects identified were Jesse Drive, the 55 widening, and Richardson Road. Jesse Drive, see, currently with that, you know, we're working on a feasibility study right now for Jesse Drive, and we're showing that as a priority in our capital improvement program. The NC-55 widening is an NC DOT TIP project identified to start in 2021. And then Richardson Road, and I'm assuming, which I'm sure they mean the link between Olive Chapel Road and US-64 when they're talking about Richardson Road, not the completion southward of Hume Olive, because Richardson Road is the western alternative to Kelly Road, which is getting busier and busier, and as that area grows out to the west, Richardson Road between Olive Chapel and 64 provides a vital link. So that Richardson Road is being completed, at least as a two-lane road with a median, by the Smith Farm Development and then also the Sweetwater Development. So we'll have a connection between Olive Chapel and 64 by the end of those projects.
And if I can add just a little bit of color commentary, I've also heard Richardson Road comments about the bridge since that does flood out, so, which is working with the DOT to do like we did for Kelly and Apex Barbecue coming soon.
Yes.
And Richardson will be the next logical one.
Yeah, and that's important to point out. I mean, that's definitely a project we'd want to see happen, and when it does, we'd want the bridge to be as high as possible, because, I mean, the town's paying over $300,000 to get, you know, just to get DOT to raise the bridge up, to be able to get a greenway underneath on Apex Barbecue. So this is another opportunity for us to partner with them if needed.
Russell, the Southwest Connector is funded. Is that the bridge over the...
That's the bridge, yes.
That's the bridge. We don't anticipate that starting until May of 2020?
Well, that was based on, and we started out with earlier, with, you know, more optimism with that project. We were, we ran into some delays with public involvement and looking back at some of the design issues. We are currently accelerating that project as much as we possibly can, working with CSX and working with NC DOT, because we were told review times with CSX were going to be much longer than originally anticipated. They are giving us some positive feedback currently. We were on a conference call with them in the past week, and it sounded like, you know, once we get the ball rolling and get their reviews done, reviews in process, they can turn around reviews fairly quickly. Now, it's a question of how many reviews, but we're pretty far along, and we're going to accelerate our end as much as possible. So we're not going to have any delays on our end, and it's going to be pushed, pushed to them as much as we possibly can. So I'm, optimistically, we could start the Peakway Bridge in 2019, get going on that sooner. The other thing that's somewhat in our favor is NC DOT identifies that as an alternate route for the NC-55 construction, because they're replacing the bridge on NC-55 as part of the TIP project. They are very interested in us getting our project open, so they have a place for people to go when there are delays and issues with that bridge construction on 55. So they are going to help us push it as much as they possibly can.
That was funded with a bond in '15, was it? Fall of '15?
That was, yeah.
No, November of '15? Okay.
Yeah. It's taken, I mean, it's taken longer than originally anticipated. I mean, it'll be a better project because of that, but, you know, that's one of those things. When you, I mean, we spend a lot of time, you know, with public coordination, you know, trying to, trying to make projects, you know, I guess enhanced as much as we possibly can, you know, making a better-looking bridge, you know, the best possible bridge we can. It takes a little bit more time, and that's what slowed us down a little bit. If it was just engineers sitting in a dark room drawing stuff up, we could get it done pretty quickly, but it would probably be ugly, and you wouldn't like it as much, so.
Didn't we lower the bridge actually in the second design?
Yeah, one of the things, yeah, for the Peakway Southwest, not to get off track too much, but I know that's interesting. We did lower it from what it would have been, because what we did early on in coordination with CSX was we got their permission to include the support for the bridge in their right-of-way between Salem Street and the tracks. Having that interior support allows us to lower the substructure of the bridge, so it did, it did help in that respect.
And cost, I believe, too.
That is, yes, that also makes it cheaper. That's correct. So next steps, scheduling source of funds for final design, roughly $14 million excluding the right-of-way is what we got for this project. We did an in-house right-of-way estimate based on the consultant's design files for right-of-way of roughly $3.1 million, so you're looking at $17 million plus currently for this project. That does include contingencies. That includes, you know, pretty hefty assumptions for utility relocations and those other kinds of things, but the way we've seen construction costs rising so quickly, I don't think it would be far off. And, you know, the longer we wait, probably the more expensive it's going to get, barring any kind of recession that might bring construction costs down a little bit. But, you know, currently, everything's been going up at a pretty quick pace. Another, another next step is to update our transportation plan to reflect the alignment shown, which you see those blue lines in the map. That is, that's going to be proposed in a future transportation plan update this year. And also, this gives us, you know, an alignment to use as guidance for future development. When people come in and want to redevelop this area, we've got a plan. We can show them and say, you know, work with us. This is, this is the roadway we plan to do. During the course of this project, we actually had, around Olive Street area, we had some townhomes that were actually, sorry, single-family homes that were proposed to be built with a subdivision, and you may remember, we were able to do some advanced acquisition on the frontage, which was good, because we were able to get that extra 20 feet for the right-of-way, make sure those homes were set back enough. So they won't be acquisitions in the future. They'll still be, you know, impact from the perspective of a homeowner of seeing the road closer, but it's not nearly as bad as it would have been if we'd just not done that advanced acquisition. We might have been buying a row of single-family homes, which, of course, that increases that $3 million right-of-way cost. And then we also, as part of this, the other, I guess, I don't know, bad news, interesting news, is that we need to consider widening the Peakway north of Center Street, at least to Old Raleigh Road. One of the things NC DOT has identified recently, and we've seen it as well, traffic coming from Center Street toward Old Raleigh Road on the Peakway backs up from time to time. They would benefit very greatly from a right-turn lane, so DOT was trying to get, even though it's our, Peakway is a town road, it affects a state-maintained intersection, you know, state-maintained roadway, Old Raleigh Road, so they are trying to get state funds to actually add a right-turn lane on our Peakway, at least until we can widen that section. Their estimate for that right-turn lane was half a million dollars, which is high for a right-turn lane, but there's a lot of utilities and other things in there, so they're working on that at division level, and I'm not sure, I haven't heard any updates lately, but I'll check on that pretty soon if I don't hear anything back. But just with the volumes that are out there, once you build this section, the problem is that section's probably already over capacity. So when you think about priorities, you either probably want to extend to this project, which makes it more expensive, all the way at least to Old Raleigh Road and go ahead and widen that section as well, or you want to go ahead and widen at least the section from Old Raleigh Road to Center Street, get that as your first priority, and then come in later and connect this. Because once you connect this, it sort of opens the floodgates in a way. It provides that convenient route to 55 that's going to attract more traffic to the Peakway, and it's going to make that link between Old Raleigh Road and Center Street even more busy than it is today. So, and if you go out there in the morning, I've seen it when I drive by sometimes, it's, I've seen it backed up all the way, and then back in the afternoon, it backs up all the way the other direction some days. I mean, it's, again, that intersection's a choke point. The Center Street project, the TIP project, will help that some, but it's not going to completely solve that problem, because you've still got one lane in each direction through there.
We have bike lanes along that. Are we going to be able to retain bike lanes onto the outside, or is that we're going to lose those when we widen?
Well, our current transportation plan, as I was showing in here, and, you know, everything we've been going off of includes 11-foot inside lanes and 13-foot outside lanes with the multi-use path on the inside of the loop, so we don't, we don't recommend bike lanes on any section of the Peakway. There's been some debate on that over the years. I think sort of the consensus was the wide outside lanes provide a little extra room for expert cyclists, whereas people that aren't expert cyclists or don't want to be on the road can get on the multi-use path and use that. The bike lanes, if you did bike lanes now, I think standards are maybe a five-foot lane, so you're talking about, if you did a bike lane, you'd have two 11-foot lanes and a five-foot lane, so you'd have 27 feet of asphalt on each side versus 24 feet of asphalt on each side, so you're adding like six more feet. So it just expands that cross-section that much more. There's some drawbacks to that, for like pedestrians, for instance, have to cross intersections, so it's more, more distance for them to cross. It also just increases that footprint, and it makes it really hard for us to squeeze the Peakway into that 100-foot right-of-way that we have. And in some cases, we only have about 90 feet of right-of-way, so we're pretty tight, you know, on our, on our Peakway as it is. But it's something for future discussion.
Or if we have a multi-use pathway, that's...
Right. And I think the idea was too, that cyclists typically ride linear arterial routes like Old US-1, which is probably in need of, you know, bicycle improvements out there. Peakway's a loop route, and probably not the kind of thing where people are going to get out there and expert cyclists are going to ride the loop as much as they will, something like an old US-1 or a Center Street.
How do they get back?
That's a good question. I'm a sidewalk rider, saying it. I don't get on the road. So, if there are any other questions, can conclude? It's been fun. I hope you feel like you got your $95,000 worth, because it's been, it's been fun.
Thank you, Russell.
Thanks.
That brings us to presentation number three, related to Green Infrastructure Center Incorporated, findings and recommendations of an 18-month-long study called Trees to Offset Stormwater, and presenting is Karen Firehawk.
Hi, I'm Shelley. Actually, you guys know me. I've been working very closely with Karen, and I'm actually just going to give a real quick introduction while I also slyly pull up PowerPoint. So, as the brief blurb says, this has been an 18-month project that the town has been working with the Green Infrastructure Group on. This is a Forest Service-funded project, it was done with a matching grant. Town staff has been working as a technical review committee in conjunction with the Green Infrastructure Center for the last 18 months, and the project is primarily to evaluate how preserving and/or replanting urban tree canopy can help mitigate stormwater runoff and stormwater impacts. This is Karen Firehawk, she's the director of the Green Infrastructure Center, has been working very closely with us for the last 18 months. I will give her the floor. One quick request, if you'll just hold your questions to the end, she has nine minutes, and we want to make that the best bang for our buck that we possibly can. Mike Deaton, David Wood, John Brown and I are all here to answer any questions that you have at the end as well, anything that Karen can't. Just want to use the up and down buttons.
Okay, thank you. Well, thanks for having me, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I've also tagged this on to a little visit to Fort Bragg later this evening to visit some Army buddies of mine, so I'm going to, I will be brief. But I, it's been a pleasure working with everyone in Apex, it's been a great team, we've had a lot of back and forth, but we've really worked together. We haven't gone off in a corner and done the study and then come back at the end. We've had regular committee meetings, we also had two public hearings, I don't want to call them hearings, really workshops, and then we also, there was a survey that the city administered for people who couldn't make the meeting. So, people have had a lot of chance to also participate, and I know some of the people who participated are here tonight in support. So, this project is actually going across six states, and Apex and Wilmington requested to be studied for North Carolina. So, we were going to pick two localities, and we tried to pick sort of a small town and a large city. The cities that are across the other states, I won't waste my nine minutes listing them, but they are all different sizes and different environments, from mountains to Piedmont to coastal plain, from mega-cities to tiny cities to little towns. So, you guys got to fall somewhere there in the mix. And what we're doing is we're looking at not only the landscape and how it's working now, but how it might change in the future, and then also looking at all the codes and policies and practices you have in place, and which ones make you soak up more water or allow water to runoff. And so, I'll elaborate on that. But this is funded by the US Forest Service as well as the North Carolina Forest Service as well. So, you didn't spend any money on this project, so opposed to the last presentation, you got a pretty good deal. You spent staff time, is what you spent, you put elbow grease into this work. But our goal was, as we've talked about, to help you realize how forests help you manage stormwater. And this little picture I have here is the case booklet, that actually is finished, but it was literally finished yesterday from the typesetter, so I didn't expect you would have it up on the town's website. So, for anyone who's wondering, it will be up probably the next week. It contains all the recommendations that I don't have time to cover tonight, so I do encourage you to read that when it comes out. But why, why is it also important, besides stormwater, which I will get into tonight, trees also are important for a lot of other reasons. They create healthy communities, access to fitness, which reduces nature deficit disorder, people actually get crabby and unhappy when they cannot see green. Clean air, even at the neighborhood scale, emergency room visits for respiratory distress are drastically reduced in well-treated neighborhoods. Asthma rates are lower, asthma attacks are lower, so even just at that small scale, it makes a difference if you have a well-treated community. Mental health, people heal faster when they can see or access green, up to 30% faster, so I work with a lot of hospitals to help them green their landscape and even to provide views of green scapes to, you know, no one wants to spend a long time in the hospital. Less crime also occurs near trees, I work a lot with police forces, they often are worried that planting trees will allow criminals to hide behind, but the data show that less crime occurs in well-treated communities. And then employees, of course, will exercise if they can access green where they work or on their way to work. So, even in already-developed landscapes, you have a lot of development, you've already grown, but you can go back into the environment and do what's called retrofitting, redesigning parking lots, redesigning asphalt areas, redesigning malls and those types of things, to actually soak up more water than they're originally designed for. So, in this example, one of the ways to think about it is a parking lot, one acre, releases about 36 times more runoff than a forest. I mean, you know, you know that when rain falls, it either soaks it or runs off, but another way to think about it is if it rains one inch, a forest will have about 750 gallons of runoff, while a parking lot will release 27,000 gallons. And that is why when we have big deluging storms, we get a lot of flooding. So, trying to think about how trees play a role in helping us contain that runoff and clean it, one tree can soak up, a large tree, like this one in the picture that I took in Apex, can soak up about 4,000 gallons of water per tree per year. So, if you multiply that times all the trees in Apex, those trees are doing a tremendous job for you. And what we're here to talk about tonight briefly is how we might actually take a little bit more care of those trees, so we can ensure that we have that for the future. So, I want to go quickly through some of these slides, like I said, they're covered in the case booklet, but about 20% of the rainfall is actually captured by the crown of the tree, the canopy. And the question is, how do we make Apex function like a forest? And the answer is not, everyone has to leave, a relief there. We just want to say, how can we find as many ways to poke holes in this urban landscape and allow trees to grow, and also take care of those older trees that we have? In looking at how we calculate runoff, we have to think about the setting in which the tree is. So, a tree over a lawn, the rain falls through the tree, down the trunk, and it can soak into the grass. But if it's over a parking lot, all right, or over a street, then some of that water will not get to the tree and it will runoff. So, to understand the setting of those trees, we've actually done a very detailed landcover map of the city. We used aerial imagery and other data to analyze what parts of the city are paved, which parts are rooftop, which parts are lawn, which parts are trees. And then, down to the tree scale, divided those trees up into whether they're sitting in a park or along the greenway, or in a yard, or over a parking lot. So, that's where we get into the complex engineering. But to cut to the chase, your canopy is about 46%, and some people say, what does that mean? That's good, so that's a good number to have. But one of the things to keep in mind is that as our canopy ages, just like as we age, we will eventually die. Sorry to depress you, but the truth is that older trees, even in a well-treated neighborhood, may be in trouble, because I drive through a neighborhood and I'll look for the young trees. I'll look, where's that next generation going to come from? So, thinking about replanting in older neighborhoods and also taking really good care of the canopy that we have. The landcover analysis, we looked at the whole study area, so not just the land that's in the incorporated part of Apex, but the whole area, and that's partly because as you annex land in the future, you can still have this information to inform your decision-making. We all, so let me go back here. So, one thing about the canopy, I said it's good that it's 46%, but it's not evenly distributed across the city. It's not 46% in every single nook and cranny of Apex. So, thinking about which neighborhoods or which shopping or commercial districts could benefit from being leafier or greener. We also looked at your streets, and I don't expect you to be able to see all the streets in this map at this scale, but we looked at how well-canopied they are, and that matters if you want to, we were just talking about bicycling, well, people are more likely to bike and walk if the street is green. People shop longer and pay more per item in tree-lined shopping districts, up to 30% more. So, it does matter if your streets are green, the experience, it even calms traffic, get a traffic report, people actually drive more slowly and more carefully in well-treated streets, because they create visual stimuli that cause you to slow down, your brain has to absorb a lot of information. So, we asked also, where can we fit trees? It's one thing to say, this is the canopy that we have, but where might we re-green some of these areas? And so, these little sort of hatch green areas show places across the city where we looked at where trees could be fitted, and we excluded things like, okay, there's a fire hydrant, you can't plant a tree there, there's an overhead line, you know, all of those reasons and buildings and things, and then still found a lot of spaces. So, this is the potential planting area map, and again, I'm not expecting you to zoom in on that right now, but orange colors show where trees can be planted. And like all the cities that we're studying, usually the ratio of public to private land ownership is about 80% private, 20% public. So, how we're going to take care of our canopy is going to actually involve the participation of everyone in this room and the people who are not here tonight. You guys can control your municipal trees, your street trees, your park trees, trees around your stormwater ponds, but to make sure that we have a leafy, green, cool, good air quality, not too much runoff town, is by everyone volunteering to plant. And so, we have looked at different scenarios across the city to look at where planting might be possible. So, in the downtown, for example, your canopy's smaller at 33.5%, so that's a place where you have a lot of room to plant. And then, playing around with how much area is available to plant, we find about 15.4% of the downtown is open that could be planted. And then, we also look at different-sized trees, 40-foot diameter, 20-foot diameter. So, sometimes you can't fit a big tree, could you fit a small tree? And we also are not suggesting that you're going to take all your baseball fields or your soccer fields and put trees on them. We tried to exclude those kind of places. Now, I have a very complicated spreadsheet, which I'm not going to spend 90 minutes going through with you, I'm sure you're glad to hear that, but I just wanted to let you know that we have given this to Apex, and what this spreadsheet does, basically, you can plug in numbers, like what if we lost 10% of our canopy as we continue to develop and infill and grow, how much more water would runoff? But you can also do the opposite and say, what if we planted these many more trees, how much more water could we soak up? It will also have a nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment calculator, so that you can see if you're also cleaning the water. So, we play around with this, I know these numbers, again, are hard to absorb in a public meeting, so in one scenario, we played with if we added more, had more trees added or take them away, and we translate that into bathtubs of stormwater, because people don't think in terms of millions of gallons. And then, what if we change it, what if we plant more area, how much could we decrease the runoff? 780,000 more bathtubs. So, one of the things I do want to tell you, and this is actually news to our partners in the city agencies, or town agencies, sorry, is we are realizing that it's very hard for most people to get their heads around a spreadsheet, so we're also going to be providing you with a map for the town that shows all the parcels and all the areas where planting trees would make the most difference in terms of soaking up water. And where also conversely, places in the town where taking trees away would have the greatest impact. So, as you spend money on trees or invest in them, you'll know where you should invest that money. So, we have a number of quick policies I'm going to run through, we have a much longer policy document that will also be posted on the town's website. I'm not going to take you through 17 recommendations either right now, but I'll just hit some of the highlights. So, tree planting along streets, currently, tree planting's been prohibited in rights-of-way, and so, we are suggesting that there could be a lot more tree planting in rights-of-way. Even to be, to speak frankly, the image of your Peakway, if I got that right, I would probably, if somebody gave me unlimited budget, I would probably go in there and add more trees along the sides to protect the pedestrians. We also are looking at how you plant trees, what kind of trees you plant, so we recommend that you develop a list of native species that you recommend to developers, and even more importantly, a do-not-plant list. There are certain species that should not be planted in Apex, because they don't do well here, and there are also species that sometimes you shouldn't plant next to a street, such as a red maple. They get scarred from sun and scalded, and they do not do well next to parking lots and that, they need to be set back. So, there are some particular things to do with just simple changes to your development code that would ensure trees live longer. This is a bit controversial, but we've also worked with a lot of cities on installing a stormwater utility, and what that does is it actually looks at how much impervious surface you have, and then people who have more impervious surface pay money into a fund, so you're charged based on how big your parking area is or your rooftop. So, for example, if you are Walmart, you would pay a lot, but if you're a small business, your fee would be very low. But that generates a fund that you can use to do your stormwater infrastructure, but the important part of that is it also gives people credit. So, if I'm a small business owner and I plant a few trees in front, I can now get a rebate, if you will, and pay less. And what it does is it incentivizes people to actually plant trees or take care of stormwater on their sites. Proactive tree work, a lot of times, we don't take care of the trees until there's been a storm that's come through, and trees are down, and there's a mess, and then we hire contractors to come clean up the mess. But if you spend a little money to have people go out and look at the trees, survey them, and see which ones might be at risk, you take care of those risks ahead of time, and you do not have that expense of reacting in an emergency. So, we suggest that you would benefit from actually having a plan for surveying your public trees. The town doesn't have enough funds at present to manage a thriving urban forest. The town is growing rapidly, and I know that that causes a lot of stresses and strains as you grow, some of the growing pains of going from a smaller town to a somewhat larger town, but as you grow more, as you annex more land, you will become the owners of more and more trees. And we suggest that even like some larger towns or larger cities, you would benefit from having a crew in-house that could do some of this work for you, to survey, to understand the health of the trees, to take care of them, to prevent problems and disasters from happening. All right, so I got through the highlights, there are many more recommendations in our report, but I wanted to give time for questions. Thank you, or comments.
I was wondering, what was the current use of the land that you had that was overlaid with the orange, or, I mean, what was the most common thing that was currently there?
It's a variety of things, so it could be a lawn, it could be open space, say, maybe a business that has just a big expansive area that they mow. It tends to just be unused open space.
Like grass, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
And when we are looking at possible planting area, we usually recommend, let's say that you have, I'll just use simple math, say you had 100 acres of that land that wasn't planted and could be planted, usually you wouldn't then seek out planting 100 of those acres, you'd say, maybe I'm going to try to hit 20% of that. So, because people still want to throw a football, people don't, you know, they want a tomato garden, farmers don't want to have shade all over their gardens, so the point is that you do that strategically, you say, where can I make the most difference? And also, you might look at where are we having flooding problems, where are we having standing water?
In parking lots, I've always noticed that when they put in trees, they're always humped up.
Yes, and that makes me sad, because 21st century design is actually to recess those islands, so that they capture the water. Planting trees that don't mind having their roots inundated periodically. So, when I get out of a car in any mall or any shopping district, the first thing I do is look at how the trees are planted. So, if you were doing that, not only would you have, not have to have all that stormwater going to your storm drain system, but you would also be taking better care of that parking lot itself. You could also use permeable pavement, it's another technology as well, so you don't have freezing of your surfaces in the winter. Shaded parking lots also last much longer, so anytime, and I was pleased at the shade I see out in the parking lots around this building, it's very good.
And everybody battles for the shade in the.
That's right, I put my car away at the end, because I want it to be cool when I leave this meeting.
You said you are not printing the case books, you're putting it online?
Yeah, so it's on, it's going to be on your town's website, it'll also be on my nonprofit's website as well.
Good job, say the truth.
We got those documents within, one of them yesterday and then the other one last week. Stacy's actually, Stacy Gallois is our media guru, and she's on vacation this week, so when she gets back next week, we'll go ahead and we'll put all those documents up. I will be sending Donna a copy of the presentation, and she'll email that out to you guys probably tomorrow.
Back to Stacy.
It looks like a lot of good valuable information that we can put in place, so thank you for doing this.
Yes, it's something your engineering department can use, your planners can use, and hopefully, your future crew of urban forest. and hopefully, your future crew of urban foresters will be able to use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farhat.
That concludes our presentations for this meeting. We now move into the time of consent agenda, and I'd like to call your attention, council, to the add-on items. One and two, they're stapled and have in red at the top right, it says add-on item one, and behind it, add-on item, add-on item number two. And before I call for a motion, I just wanted to clarify, Councilman Moore, I think you expressed an interest in wanting to make a very brief statement about an item, but not necessarily pull it, is that right?
That is correct.
All right, if you want to do that briefly as opposed, then that would be fine.
Yeah, so regarding consent 18, I made this comment in our committee meeting we had a week or two ago. I love public art, I think it's great, I think it was awesome seeing it downtown at Christmas time with the glass painted on the wall or on the windows of the fire station. We allocated $21,000 to this group last year, or this fiscal year, with no real plan of what they're doing with the money. That was the number-one special appropriation in the town budget for 18 and 19. And I did not support that budget, but I just wanted to make aware that I love public art and what it does, but I would love to see more private investment in that and less public funds going towards it.
Okay. But just to be clear, you're not asking to pull this item?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just wanted to repeat my comments from the committee.
All right, understood. With that, I'll ask, is there an item that any council member wishes to pull, or is there a motion? I guess the preamble I normally give is consent agenda is exactly what it sounds like, things that were typically considered to be items of consent, so we typically use one single motion to approve them all. Is there an item that anybody wishes to pull, or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the two modifications?
Motion to approve with the two modifications.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the two add-ons. Discussion? Not hearing any, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, consent agenda passes unanimously with its plus-two. We now set the regular meeting agenda. I would like to call attention to the fact that public hearing items number five and number six will not be heard tonight. They won't be advertised, or they just, we just passed in the consent item, number one and two, that we are advertising for those in the future. With those, there is also a possible motion to go in closed session at the end, which is new, so I want to just call that out and make that part of our regular meeting agenda tonight, and we'll get into the details later, but that's, I think, the agenda that we're proposing. Is there a motion to do that?
I moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a couple of seconds. Is there discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor of approving the agenda with those modifications, five and six out, and closed session added, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that is the agenda set. We now move to public forum. This is an opportunity for you to speak to the council. We have the guidelines, hopefully, you familiarized yourself with by now, and as the town court brings the public forum item over, I guess we'll just wait. Everybody's watching you. Oh, there's no one, okay. No one has signed up for public forum. So, we open and close the public forum, and we now move into public hearings. Public hearing number one, this is a continued item from June 19, and as you can see, there is a big word "and" in front of public hearing number two, which means we will talk about public hearings one and two at the same time. That is the annexation and the possible amendments to the land use map and rezoning. And when it comes time, we'll consider both of those in a single motion if that suits everyone. So, with that, we'll now turn this over to Ms. Shelley Mayo, who will present the items.
Hi, again. Just to orient you to the site real quick, this parcel is located at 433 New Hill Olive Chapel Road. It is directly to the south of the Deer Creek Development, which is currently under construction. If you go up here to the north on New Hill Olive Chapel, you'll hit that V. One half of it belongs to Chatham County, the other half of it belongs to us. To the south, whoops, one second, the parcel is actually approximately 36.46 acres. It's currently occupied by a single-family home with some outbuildings, and it's partially wooded with several streams on it. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on October 18th, that is a part of your staff report. The 2030, so this is the annexation map, just to give you an idea of where we're proposing to annex, and, one second, there we go. The 2030 land use map actually designates the site as rural density residential. The applicant is proposing a rezoning to planned unit development conditional zoning with a maximum density of 2.5 dwelling units per acre. There's actually a small typo on the first page of your staff report, it says 2.8, but it is supposed to be 2.5. The maximum density within the resident, the rural density residential designation is one dwelling unit per acre. Because of that, the applicant's actually proposing a land use map amendment to low-density residential, which has a maximum density of three units per acre. With that amendment, the proposed planned unit development would be consistent with the 2030 land use map. To give you an idea, this is currently our ETJ, and this is all within Wake County's jurisdiction, so this is all Wake County RAW. We have several sections of our R here, as well as here. This is the Deer Creek PUD, and then, there are a couple parcels of B1 up to the north along 64. There we go. The applicant is proposing seven uses, single-family detached, accessory apartment, greenway, recreation facility, private, utility, minor, park active, and park passive. My apologies, I clicked on something. There we go. There are several conditions included in this PUD. I'm going to point out the ones which are unusual or specific directly to this particular development. Included among that is the proposal that this development be age-restricted, that is, age-restricted in compliance with federal housing acts and North Carolina housing acts. The specific language for that restriction is actually located on page two of your staff report. I'm not going to read that because it's very dense text. There's also an additional condition that a minimum of nine houses, and this is a very recent change that I was made aware of as I walked in, your staff report says a minimum of five houses shall be constructed so as to provide installation of solar panels and a power system of at least four kilowatt capacity. I was advised by the applicant that they are amending that zoning condition to be a minimum of nine houses will provide installation of panels and a power system of at least a three-kilowatt system. Just a couple of other things, the PD plan proposes an overall maximum density of 2.5 units per acre, as I already mentioned. They're also proposing a maximum of 90 dwelling units with a proposed minimum lot size of 4,500 square feet and an average lot size of 5,500 square feet. The setbacks that are proposed are listed in your staff report, and those are fairly consistent with what we've seen before. The architectural conditions are listed as number nine on page three of your staff report. A through I are very consistent with what we typically see for residential architectural conditions, so I'm not going to read those. There are two, however, that were added on for this. The first one is that all front porches will be a minimum of six feet deep, and the second is that in order to facilitate the age-restricted community, homes constructed on this property are permitted to include monolithic slab foundations, just because as people age, they tend to have more difficulty with steps. On the next page, we have the proposed buffers. The northern buffer, located adjacent to Deer Creek, is proposed as a 10-foot type B. The UDO requirement is a 15-foot type A. The southern buffer is a 20-foot type A, it's along these larger lot properties. What's required by the UDO is a 20-foot type B. Now, that southern perimeter buffer was increased to a type A after going to planning board, that was planning board's recommendation, and the applicant went through with that. That's reflected in the documents and the plan sheets that are in the staff report. The eastern perimeter, right over here, is a 20-foot type B. The western perimeter is A, so that would be these, right here, is also 20-foot type B, and then, the thoroughfare buffer is a 30-foot type A. The thoroughfare buffer was also increased in opacity, and that was per staff's recommendation based on several town council comments over the years. The applicant is also proposing 27% RCA, that includes the required 2% extra if the development's masqueraded. The applicant's also proposing a couple of unusual, over and above, conditions for stormwater. I'm just going to read these verbatim. "The project shall meet all stormwater reduction requirements listed in the UDO, including limiting the post-development stormwater flows to not exceed pre-development rates. In addition, the post-development peak runoff rate shall be limited to the pre-development peak runoff rate for the two-year, 24-hour, 10-year, 24-hour, and 25-year, 24-hour storm events. In addition, a portion of this property is in the critical watershed. Because of this, and in addition to the current stormwater management requirements required by the UDO, the PUD shall implement the Jordan Lake Stormwater Management Rules for new development. On-site stormwater control measures shall be designed to achieve nutrient unit area mass loading rates, per those management rules. The project must meet these loading rates on-site with appropriate SGMs. No offset options will be allowed in order to achieve the nutrient unit area mass loading rates." The project is also, also shows a portion of a greenway going through it, that's this dark section here on the plan sheet. The public greenway is expected to connect to an approved greenway on the Deer Creek side. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee reviewed this on their April 25 meeting and recommended a fee-in lieu with the cost of constructing the greenway to be credited against the fees The master subdivision plan or site plan for any development for this particular project shall comply with the adopted comprehensive transportation plan in effect at the time of site plan approval, and the property shall be consistent with the town's adopted bicycle plan. This is because we're currently undergoing an update to the transportation plan and creating, and an update to the bike-ped plan as well. So, this condition was added in to make sure that, instead of it being grandfathered under the existing plan, which will be updated at the end of the year, it will, any subdivision plans will be under the new plan, just to give you a heads-up. The project will connect via a stub street to Deer Creek. There's also a full movement access here at New Hill Olive Chapel Road, and there are multiple stub streets shown all over this plan, there's five of them, each of which is going to be more closely evaluated at the master subdivision plan stage. Planning staff recommends denial of the proposed 2030 land use map amendment and rezoning. The reason for that is that the applicant's argument for amending the 2030 land use map from rural density to low density is that single-family homes provide a transition from the community mixed-use center at Deer Creek to the surrounding rural homes and land uses. Staff agrees that normally, single-family provides that transition, however, this particular petition does not. In order to provide that transition, staff believes that the lot sizes for this development would need to be larger than those in Deer Creek and smaller than the adjacent rural lots. The lots in Deer Creek are between about 6,500 and 8,000 square feet. The minimum lot size proposed for Olive Glen is 4,500, the average is 5,500. In order to support the applicant's rationale, planning staff requested that they increase the lot sizes of homes south of the creek, so, this creek right here, on the south side, to a minimum of 10,000 square feet. Staff's request was based on numerous comments and requests made by town council members over the years in similar situations. The applicant actually denied to make, declined to make the request, which is their right. Based on that, we are recommending denial. Planning board heard this petition at their June 11 meeting and voted 6 to 2 to recommend approval of the petition, with the condition that the buffer along the south be changed to a type A buffer. That change is reflected in the revised PUD document and plan sheets included in this report. I am happy to answer any questions that you have for me. The applicant is also here if you have any questions for them.
All right, before we get to the applicant, let's see if there are questions for Stat, Shelley, or Staff on the presentation.
Yeah, I had one that I hadn't thought about until the Peakway thing, we were talking about it. So, the New Hill Olive Chapel is two-lane road right now, right? And I know there was some traffic studies. Is that planned to be a two-lane road for foreseeable future, or, and are there offsets that are accommodating any kind of widening that might happen with that one?
Russell would be the best one to answer that.
Along New Hill Olive Chapel Road, we identify that road as a rural section currently, and I believe we're continuing to carry that forward in our transportation plan. It would be a two-lane road with turn lanes as needed. I think we show as a 90-foot right-of-way, if I'm not mistaken, which 90 feet is about the minimum right-of-way you can have to have a shoulder section, state-maintained roadway with ditches and still have sidewalks along the roadway. You know, you can do a tighter right-of-way, like, you do a three-lane road in a 70-foot right-of-way, but it would be typically curb-and-gutter type roadway, so to get those ditches, you need about 90 feet. It's sort of similar to Apex Barbecue Road, where we have a two-lane road on 100-foot right-of-way, so, you know, not too different from that. Certain areas of this, like, north of this, up to 64, it's probably going to have to be multi-lane, and as you get to 64, that's eventually going to have to be an interchange. And if you've been out there lately, it's getting really, really busy out there, so...
The one that kind of goes off to the right?
Yeah, where it goes up to 751, I mean, that's only going to get busier, and as areas like Chatham Park start to, you know, really develop and take off, I mean, that's going to be a pretty major, continue to be a major route, and I think you're probably going to see an interchange, if I had to guess, I would say within the next 10 years, you'd see an interchange up there at 751. But further south, we're trying to keep the rural character of that roadway, so, you know, generally, it'll be a two-lane road with left-turn lanes as needed, and just shoulder section, and then, of course, sidewalk and/or multiuse path along the roadway as appropriate as well. Thanks.
Shelley, would you say the northern buffer was 10-foot type B?
The 10-foot type B, yes, sir.
And then, the southern was a...
20-foot type A. There we go.
Now, is the A or the B or both, are they undisturbed or supplemented?
Typically speaking, the B can be undisturbed, let me back up. Typically, all of our buffers are undisturbed to the maximum amount possible. If there's existing vegetation there, we prefer that it be left there. What will happen is that individual landscapers will go in and supplement with evergreen landscaping in order to bring it up to the opacity standards. So, in the case of the 20-foot type A, more than likely, what we've seen happen in the past is that the existing vegetation would be left, but there would also be a line of cedars or arborvitae, or something along those lines, something that stays nice and dense and full, planted along the internal edge. With a type B, there's a 50% opacity standard, so that would be supplemented intermittently with similar types of planting. Now, all of these things are done behind tree protection fence, so no large equipment is allowed to supplement. All those holes get to be dug by hand, so that we can avoid minimizing the impact, sorry, so that we can avoid the impact, or minimize the impact to the root zone as much as possible.
Do you happen to know the Deer Creek southern buffer type and width?
Not off the top of my head, I could look it up for you.
But there is a buffer on that side, too?
There is a buffer on that side. I think it's at least 10 feet, it may be thicker in some ways. It is definitely thicker in some areas, like through here. This is all planted area, I think that it's 10 feet, possibly.
It looks like it's 20, they did a scale correction.
Okay. 20 feet on the Deer Creek side?
That sounds about right, on the south side.
Total is 30.
Two things. One, related to the Older Persons Act of '95, I realize that that allows us to have age-restricted neighborhoods, but I do have a little bit of a problem with sort of how the person, this act actually says that grandchildren or children under, you know, certain ages, like here we have, is 19, are... like here we have is 19, are not permitted over a long term. And so, you know, while this act allows us to restrict a development, you know, I don't, that's the problem, I'm having a little bit of a problem with that, because you could have someone who has, older adult, 55, who has a college student, who might want to be, not need to be at home for a while, or something can happen to family and someone needs to be there longer, longer term. So how is that, how do people...
It's a really good question. It's not something that staff really asked for. It's something that was proposed by the applicant. So I'm actually going to turn that question over to the applicant, if you don't mind, since that's not really my area of expertise.
We'll table that one and see if there are any other questions for staff, and then we'll bring that one back when the applicant's up. Any other questions for staff?
I have one, quick one, and staff is looking, and I like the larger lots against, obviously, against rural residential. But there's a big distance between the creek buffer and the southern property line. Would staff be comfortable with just having larger lots right across the southern property line? Would that be more, would that be acceptable? Because it's kind of flow into the next property. And the reason I'm asking also is, we got a note from the southern property owner that he was happy with this development, as you know.
We completely understand.
As he is. So just trying to look forward.
We were taking our directive based off of stated policy from town council. In general, we feel that there needs to be more of a transition between, say, a 5,500 square foot lot and one that is in excess of 12 acres. So generally speaking, I think that planning staff would be fine with the larger lots just along the southern edge. If town council is fine with it as proposed, that's perfectly fine by us as well. But if you want the larger lots along just the southern edge, that's also completely understandable.
It'd be a goal.
We can, we can...
We can discuss that.
Yeah, when the applicant, because the applicant would have to be willing to propose that in there. All right. Anything else for staff?
Seven question related to the Planning Board. Was this the issue they were having as well?
It was. And they discussed the possibility of increasing the lot size just along the southern portion. That wasn't something that the applicant felt comfortable with agreeing to at the time. I don't know if their mind has changed or not. They were comfortable with increasing the opacity on that southern side to try to provide at least more of a visual buffer, even if they couldn't get more of a true transition of lot sizes.
All right. Thank you, Shelley. Is the applicant here, wish to speak, or representative?
I am. Good evening, Mr. Ramers, Council. Jason Behr with Morningstar Law Group, 421 Fayetteville Street, Suite 530. Excited to be here on behalf of the applicant in this case. Here with me tonight is Andy Sandman. He is the gentleman who has put this property together and has been working hard to address the concerns, questions, and comments that have come up during this process, and who's incredibly excited, by the way, to bring forward the first, to our knowledge, town's first, age-restricted, single-family residential community. Andy and his team have done age-restricted community and housing for seniors in other jurisdictions. In fact, they did the Cypress of Raleigh, which, if you're familiar with that, is a really nice senior housing facility. So he's personally very excited to be associated with this case. Also here with me tonight is Stuart Jones of Jones &amp; Cottles &amp; Austin Engineering, who's provided the land planning and engineering for the project that's in front of you. Shelley's done a fantastic job of addressing the guts of the proposal, and so I'm going to focus on some bigger-picture issues that I think are really why we believe there's a compelling case for the case to be approved, as is currently proposed. And there's three of those. First is that it's an age-restricted community. Second, it's, as far as my experience in the town of Apex, it's the most environmentally responsible zoning case that I have worked on. And third, it's that, it in fact provides the appropriate transition from Deer Creek to the properties to the south, and I'll explain why we believe that to be the case. Again, going back to the first point, as an age-restricted community, not only are we excited to bring the project forward because Andy has experience in delivering these communities, but also, as you all are aware, there's a tremendous need in the town, in the region, in this market for housing for seniors. There's a lack of housing for seniors, and every day, more folks are growing into that 55 and older, 62 and older demographic. And while there is plenty of market rate opportunities for housing that's been developed, there has not been a corresponding amount of senior living communities developed in that area. I don't know if you saw the article that was posted on WRL a couple weeks ago, but there was an article that ran not too long ago about the psychological benefits to seniors of having housing for seniors. That they respond well to being in communities with folks like themselves, they relate to each other very well, it provides, you know, it provides a warm community in a place where there are tremendous psychological benefits to seniors as they age in place. Additionally, having senior housing allows for the folks who are currently living in the traditional kind of 3,500-square-foot house with the picket fence, you know, once their kids decide to move on and they, you know, they're living in a house that's too big for them, it allows them to move down. It allows them to move down, you know, in the town of Apex, allows them to stay in Apex. They don't have to move to Cary, where there has been a lot of senior housing. They don't have to move to Raleigh, where there's been a lot of senior housing. So it not only addresses a need in the community, but also allows for your current aging population to age in place and to stay in Apex in the community they want to be in. A couple of aspects of age-restricted housing that you might not, it might not be patently obvious, but when you think about, makes a lot of sense. First, they generate a lot less traffic. Senior communities generate a lot less traffic than traditional market-rate housing because you don't have teenagers living at home, because you have less trips in and out. And that's especially true during the peak hour. Seniors typically aren't out on the roads during the worst times, during the time that everybody is, the folks who are going back and forth to work regularly. Seniors have a little bit more flexibility to avoid those times. And so from a transportation impact standpoint, senior communities really do a great job of not overburdening the roadways. Second, they don't generate school-aged children. And so senior communities aren't going to have an impact on the Wake County public school system. Again, that's a benefit of, when you deliver senior living facilities, you know that you're doing so in a way that's not going to continue to overburden Wake County public schools. And overall, senior communities have less impact on the town's infrastructure. That's just, that's just a matter of fact. Again, a lot of that relates to trips into public school system. But that is why we believe having an age-restricted community in this location makes a lot of sense. It makes a lot of sense for the town. As I mentioned, second, this is the most environmentally responsible project that I have worked on in the town. As was noted, we have increased the solar commitment to nine houses, nine homes being delivered with active solar at 3 kilowatt. Second, that the proposal includes the 25-year storm, which I know you all have seen in other cases. But I don't think what you've seen is the extraordinary commitment that has been made by our team to comply with the Jordan Lake rules. As you might be aware, the Jordan Lake rules have been in draft form for an extended period of time, but have not been adopted. We appreciate Councilor Killingsworth working with us. We recognize that a portion of the site is in that Wake County area that's been designated. You know, it feeds into ultimately what will go out to Jordan Lake. We understand the sensitivity associated with making sure that what we do as an applicant, what you do as elected officials in approving development, that you're doing, that you're being good stewards and that you're protecting the drinking water supply. And by approving this case, as opposed to leaving it, you know, one unit to the acre, which wouldn't have the standard, you're doing the citizens a benefit by protecting the critical water supply. I would add also that the condition not only commits to comply with the Jordan Lake rules, but it goes one step further and requires you to do it onsite. The Jordan Lake rules, even in their draft form, allows developers to do what's called a buy-down. If you can't meet it onsite, you can contribute funds or you can buy areas in other locations that allow you to buy down to meet those standards. That's not allowed in this case. So all of the commitments that are included, all the performance standards that are required of the Jordan Lake rules have to be done here onsite. Again, that is a, that's an unprecedented condition, that certainly in my experience in the town. And I venture to guess it will be a precedent condition as projects move forward in this area that are in the critical watershed area. So again, I applaud our team for working hard to make that a condition of the case because we believe and we agree it's the right thing to do. Lastly, we do believe that a senior community is the right transition. Now, from a pure lot-size sense, from a kind of myopic view on a lot-size standpoint, we recognize, we've got 8,000-square-foot lots to our north, we're 5,500, that sounds like we're transitioning away. But from a land-planning standpoint, transitions are transitioning from more intense uses to less intense uses. And I don't think anybody would argue that a senior community at 2 and 1/2 units to the acre is a more intense use than a market-rate community to the north that includes town homes and single-family detached. Again, as I mentioned, there's certainly less traffic, there's going to be less noise because you're not going to have teenagers and basketball and all the things that go along with a market-rate community. And so from a transitioning of intensity of uses, we actually think this is an appropriate transition from a more intense use to our north to a less intense use to the south. As was mentioned by the staff, we have heard from the neighbor to the south who's very comfortable with the proposal, recognizes that if anything's going to be developed on that site, housing for seniors is an ideal use. And that's really the only folks that have reached out to us during this process, as we've only heard support. There's a gentleman who lives across the street who hasn't spoken publicly, but has talked to us on a couple of occasions after, after we've had hearings and has noted that he's comfortable and likes the idea of housing for seniors in this area. And so with that, again, we're incredibly excited about the case. We think a vote in favor of this case is a vote for, you know, housing for seniors. It's a, I think it sends a message to the community associated with environmental responsibility in development projects in this area, and we respectfully request you all's support of the same. On the right-of-way dedication, Councilor Gant, you asked that question. We're dedicating 20 feet of right-of-way as part of this process. I just want to be clear on that front. I know you were curious about the future road section. We are accommodating the town's road section as part of this development. Our understanding is that the access onto New Hill Olive Chapel, we'll actually be right-in, right-out and not full movement, just for what it's worth. And then on the age restriction, Councilor Dozier, again, we're complying with the federal guidelines because that's what, in order to deliver an age-restricted community, we're required to do, we have to comply with those things. So in terms of, you know, if there's a senior who wants to have a teenager live at home, unfortunately, this isn't going to be the community for them because that's not the concept associated with the, with the community, with an age-restricted community. So with that, we're here to answer any further questions you might have, and again, we respectfully request your support. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Let me see if there are questions for you.
So I guess I'll jump in. So one of the things, when you said that the myopic lens, sort of that, you know, I wish we wouldn't kind of start with that, that I think that the staff is, you know, done a great job in laying out for us what their vision is, and so to say that they're short-sighted, kind of, it's not sort of where I want to go with what the staff has done today. So that's the first thing. The other thing I would say is, when we're speaking about market rate, you mentioned that. So can you tell me that these homes for older adults are not going to be, they're going to be below market rate then?
No.
So it's going to be affordable and for seniors?
No. When I say market rate, I'm comparing market versus age-restricted.
Okay, okay. So then the things that I really am concerned about, so older adults in Apex who have fixed incomes and all of them don't, and maybe lower incomes, will they be able to buy into this?
We hope so. I mean, again, it's not age, it's not a affordable housing community. We're not going to meet the standards and guidelines associated with affordable housing, whether at 60% or 80%. Not going to represent that. But, you know, we're optimistic that there are seniors in the market who will find this an attractive opportunity for them.
Okay. I thought you mentioned affordable. That's why I wanted to go back to that. And you mentioned transportation, and this isn't, had to be part of this, but with the location, do you know whether this neighborhood would offer transportation for seniors?
I don't know that information. Is that what typically you guys do, George?
Typically, that's managed, we have pretty active HOA in our active adult...
Hang on. If you're going to speak, if you're going to bring him up, go ahead and bring him up, or else speak for him.
So what, that was George Aiken with AD Homes, the proposed builder of the site. What he was saying was that they would rely on the HOA to make that determination. These are active adult communities. They're 55 and older. It's not, you know, 80 and older. So I think the presumption is there won't be transportation delivered as part of the community at the outset, but give that opportunity to the community to make that determination if and when they decide they want it.
Okay. And then back to my thing about a child or a caregiver need to be there for a longer term. How is that monitored? How is, I mean, how is that monitored if someone needs to move back for economic or health reasons?
Again, so, once the community is turned over, it's like, it's monitored by the HOA. It's an enforcement, it's enforced, as an HOA enforces whether you can paint your house a certain color, it's enforced in the same exact fashion. There are regulations that are adopted as part of the declarations that are included in the HOA, and all of that is handed over to the HOA.
And I guess the last thing is, are you going to open up your vision related to what the staff really wants to see?
In terms of...
In terms of the lot size?
Yeah. We can't accommodate larger lots anywhere on the site. And we, as you can see, there's a lot of unusable area. And honestly, we're targeting the lot size to the demographic. You know, seniors are looking for smaller lots. They don't want a larger lot to maintain. That's inherent in kind of what the target demographic is looking for. And I'm also concerned that if we, if we, you know, add, and I know my client is concerned, you know, if we, you know, locate a stretch of 8,000-square-foot lots along the southern end of the site, it's going to artificially inflate the cost of the houses themselves. I mean, it's going to be spread over the total number of units, but it's going to make the barrier to entry more expensive by increasing the lot size and decreasing the number of lots. And so we, it's primarily directed towards our demographic, though. It's just not something that we believe our demographic is looking for.
So looking forward to hearing from my colleagues, but I think a lot of the things that I've asked you, it just, not just age restriction, which is good, but there's other restrictions for me that I'm hearing that are causing me to have some pause. And this is why, you know, I work on behalf of people for affordable options and for older adults, but I'm having some real pause here with some of the questions that I've got answers to this evening.
Jason, if you don't mind, can you give me, I'm not too familiar with the age restriction. I guess it's a federal guideline, is that what, can you explain that a little bit more? I don't understand all that.
And I can't stand in front of you and declare myself an expert on the federal guidelines associated with age-restricted housing, but there is a construct that the federal government has adopted and enforces, that it, the state has adopted as well, that in order to qualify as an age-restricted community, you have to ensure that certain guidelines are met, and one of those is that, you know, at least 80% of the people living in the community are above the age of 55, and as Councilman Dozier noted, that there's standards adopted associated with operation of the community that there's, you can't violate those with folks living, you know, beyond a temporary standard. But in terms of the nuances of the federal and state program, I can't explain those to you. I just don't have, I don't work in that arena enough.
And there's, to my knowledge, you probably know better through your research, but to my knowledge, there's no other community in Apex?
To our knowledge. I mean, we've, I know my client looked at it and hasn't seen another single-family residential age-restricted community in the town of Apex.
So over time, the age rules, that they stay in place? I guess the HOA enforces them. Does it, can the HOA change its own rules, I guess, and loosen things? And has it...
I believe after a certain, a certain period of time, maybe 20 years.
So...
Yeah. But in this case, they can't change the rules because it's going to be a part of the zoning.
Right.
And the standard rules would allow, I think after 20 years, the HOA has given the opportunity, kind of like with an affordable housing community, after 20 years, you can make it market. But in this case, that's why it's critical that it's a condition of the zoning, that they wouldn't be able to change that without coming...
They have to come down again to...
Yep.
Well, I was looking at the larger lot size, and frankly, when we were looking at larger lot size before, butting up against rural residential, a lot of times, they had the rural residential there already. So you're putting on a new subdivision alongside an old subdivision, and that's where you really need the larger lot sizes. In this case, and I'm kind of backing off a little bit to say that it's a farm. I looked at it, it's a farm there. There's no trees on a lot of it, and whatever goes in there is going to come in after this development. So I would like to request that the developer work to get larger lot sizes to the extent possible, but I don't see that there should be a requirement, to my thoughts, of something like that. But that's, that's about it. And the fact that the individual to the south really supported this, this item. So if there was, if there was already, that was already subdivided, I'd be hard over on this thing to have larger lot sizes along the bottom line, but I don't think we need to do that. That's my personal opinion.
Jason, what was the, the UDO calls on the north perimeter for 15-foot type A? I see you guys reduced the density in the footage of that. You've made up for, it looks like the density in some of the other buffers, you didn't You've made up for, it looks like the density in some of the other buffers, you didn't increase for the, you didn't add back that five feet you took away from the north perimeter. What was your?
Tight fit. As you can see, the, you've got this buffered stream, 100 feet on either side, or excuse me, 50 feet on either side, that cuts through the site, actually, it might be 100 in there, I think it is, that creates a really tight squeeze in here. You have to get access up to here and lot up against that, so it was really just a matter of, we can't afford to do it and still be able to put lots in that area.
You could do a, could you do a 10-foot type A instead of a type B to increase the density, the opacity, I guess is the right word, between the two?
Well, I believe it's a type, is it a type A or a type B? Diane, do you know if it's type A or type B?
Type B.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it just doesn't seem equitable to this project to require a type A adjacent to existing single-family homes when a type B was permitted next to a fairly large lot out of the gate. I mean, and quite honestly, when we made the commitment to do the type A on the south, I mean, it's a significant financial commitment in terms of the planting required associated with that, and a number of the conditions that you've heard are significant financial conditions. I think, you know, maybe that conversation would have been better had we not already...
You said the north was in Deer, in Deer Creek is a type B?
Type B, yeah.
It's a 20-foot.
20-foot B.
So it's double.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you add two semi-Opecs together, you get one Opec.
If we plant them the right way.
Negative times a negative.
Anything else while you had the floor?
No, no.
Okay. Anything for?
I don't have any questions, just a comment. Do you want me to make that now?
Not yet, because we've got to go to the public hearing still, so we can hang on to that, if it's just a comment. Any other questions for the applicant before we go to public hearing? All right. Thank you, Jason.
We're here.
All right. All right. At this time, I'll go to the public hearing, and again, this is for both the annexation and the rezoning and the amendment to the land use map. But no one signed up, so we will both open and close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council for comment.
I work with older adults, so one of the things that you notice as you, people are looking for a piece of property and a house that they can take care of as they age. So, and having the smaller lot size is much easier to take care of rather than having an acre or, you know, an eighth of an acre or whatever it is. So these smaller lot sizes make sense for an age-restricted community. They're also going above and beyond and, you know, protecting this area. I mean, this, this stream protection here is unprecedented, and this is something I would like to see with any development going out toward Chatham County, because we, we really do need to protect our waters, our drinking water. So seeing this being put in place is great to me. So I like that we've got more solar in here, too. So I don't have any complaints about this project.
Are you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'll take a motion if there's one to be made.
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion in a second for approval. Comments on the motion?
I would like to say, the age targeted of this project is nice. I live in the oldest neighborhood in Apex with a lot of aging people, and I had a comment the other day about, I just can't move anywhere in Apex. So I think this is great. I am not interested in the low-density creep going south, down, you know, into the, you know, Jordan Lake watershed and that area where we envision larger lots, but I am in support of this project. I do like the age restriction on it.
I'm not going to repeat myself, but while I do like a lot of features of this plan, I'm not going to be able to support it at this time. I have questions as to whether older adults who have certain income challenges would be able to buy into this, and so since I don't have those quite answered for me this evening, I'm not going to be able to support it at this time.
All right. If there are no other comments, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
All right. That passes by four to one. And that, just to be clear, was for the annexation, the rezoning, and the amendment of the map. All right. We now move to public hearing number three. This is also continued from July 17th, and this is the 18CZ15 rezoning case of a half-an-acre at 314 North Mason Street. And presenting is Liz Lofton.
Good evening. This is rezoning case 18CZ15 at 314 North Mason Street. To orientate you to the site, the town campus is to the west, North Mason Street, Center Street, and Old Mill Village. The property is currently zoned medium-density residential and is located in the small-town-character overlay district. The applicant is proposing to rezone to planned development conditional zoning. The 2030 land use map classifies the subject property as medium-density residential, and the proposed PUD is consistent with that classification. The property currently has one single-family home with several accessory structures. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on March 29th, and a copy of the neighborhood meeting is included in the staff report. A full list of the proposed design controls are on page two of the staff report. The development will have a maximum of two dwelling units and a proposed minimum lot width of 57 feet. The property is in a small-town-character overlay district, therefore, no RCA or buffers are required. The proposed PUD is consistent with the Apex transportation plan and includes one point of access onto North Mason Street, and will include sidewalk along the front edge. Due to the size and scope, the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission is not required to review, and a fee in lieu shall be paid at the time of subdivision plot. Water, sewer, and electric service will be provided by the town of Apex, and staff has worked with the applicant on utility line placement for the two homes as not to damage the roots of the existing trees that are to be preserved on-site. The small-town-character overlay district was adopted on July 18th, 2006, and at the time it was adopted, there were architectural standards in our UDO for single-family homes. Due to changes in the state law, those architectural conditions for single-family homes had to be removed from the UDO. The applicant has agreed to add architectural conditions that are consistent with what was in the UDO, and the full list is included on page three of the staff report. Planning staff can recommend approval because the proposed PUD is consistent with the land use map classification and zoning of the adjacent properties to the south, east, and west. The rezoning is in the public interest, and then it will encourage compatible infill residential that is consistent with the scale and character of the surrounding residential areas. In addition, with the PUD rezoning, the applicant has agreed to add architectural zoning conditions and sidewalk to be constructed along the front edge of the property. The planning board held a public hearing on July 9th and unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Questions for Liz?
Now, if this was a subdivision, they would be limited to required 60 feet, is that correct?
Yes.
And because it's a PUD?
Yes.
That's been reduced?
Yeah. In the small-town-character overlay district, 60-foot minimum lot width is required, and they are proposing 57 feet.
Because it's a PUD, they can have that. Because a long time ago, when we were, we ran into a subdivision where they broke up a lot into three lots, one of the reasons for the 60 feet, quite frankly, was to try to keep some of the lot sizes in downtown large. It troubles me a bit that this is getting split like it is. On the other hand, it is right up next to where the town's going to be, so my concern is, if we split this one up, what's the next one? What's the domino effect going down in terms of splitting lots up and getting long, skinny lots and high-density, higher density than what's there and lose the old-town-character to a degree, I think? But if it's a, if it's the first one and it doesn't continue on, I could probably live with it. But, and I guess I'm supposed to be asking a question. I didn't mean to get on my soapbox, but that's, that's just my thought. I, I just wanted to ask a question, why the 60 feet?
Yeah. I also want to point out that two lots to the south are, they were subdivided in the 80s, and they are 50 feet wide, the two lots to the south.
But that was before the UDO change?
It was. But, so it would...
Should you go to those, to that?
Yeah.
How wide are those two?
They're 50 feet.
So you can see what could happen. That's the problem.
All right. Any other questions for Liz? All right. Thank you, Liz. Is the applicant wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Jill Liken, and I'm the developer for Glen Arbor Homes. And I just have a couple of comments I'd like to make in addition to what Liz has already covered. See if I can get this to work. She showed you some pictures of the houses that I'd like to build. There'd be total of two houses, and these pictures are a little bit more up-to-date. These were actually generated from the architect's plans, so they look a little bit different from the ones that she showed, but they still have all the same architectural features and design features as before. And I wanted to call your attention to the driveway configuration. What, what's being shown here is that there is an individual driveway. As you get close to each house, it's a ribbon strip driveway, but the two driveways converge as you get close to the street. And we thought it was important just to have one access point off of North Mason since that's a busy street. So by the two driveways converging, there'll just be one access point, just like there is right now with the lot that's there.
So this will be the actual elevation view from the street? Those are what you're going to build? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they are. So this is a picture of the entryway, the single-access point that I just talked about. This is North Mason Street along here. And when I showed this at the March 29th neighborhood meeting, one of the comments that I got had to do with trees and tree removal. So everyone was very concerned about leaving as many trees as possible, and on this lot currently, there are eight large-caliber trees. By doing it this way, it would have required me to remove three of those eight trees. So after the meeting, I came up with a different plan, and this is the new plan. And basically, this is the single-access point of entry here. All I basically did was shift it a little bit over to the right, and by just doing that, we can keep two more of the trees. These green dots represent the, the living trees, the large trees that are there, and these two black dots represent trees that are going to be removed. Now, this tree's already dead, so I'm not counting it with the living trees. Out of all the living trees that are there, only one will have to be removed in order to put these houses in. And it's about halfway up the lot on the left side if you're standing in the street looking at the lot. So that's the new plan. And then I think Liz showed you this diagram also to try to help preserve the trees. We're going to route the utility lines around the drip lines of the trees. You can see that there, and then with these two, they're routed right through the center here. And by doing that, we're trying to avoid disturbing the root beds as much as possible. So one question I got at the meeting was, why are you building two-story houses? And the answer is basically because that is what currently is on the lot, and that's the way it's been for the last 70 years. This house was built in 1949. It's the house that's currently sitting on the lot. And in this area of the small-town district, there's a mixture of one-story and two-story houses. This is another two-story house that's in the area. It's right across the street, as a matter of fact, at 315 North Mason. So I think the houses that I'm planning to put in will fit in with the current mixture that's there of one- and two-story houses. And I went ahead and put together a brief chart that showed the minimum lot width and setback requirements. And you can see here, these are the requirements for the small-town character district, these are the requirements for a PUD, and then these are the ones that we're meeting. And as you can see, the front setback that we're going to have will be 60 feet versus what the minimum is of 20 feet for the small-town district. And we're doing that partly to help preserve the trees. By starting the, the house at 60 feet back, we can probably keep from even having to cut some of the branches that are hanging over. So we're trying to get as far away from the trees and preserve everything as much as possible. For our back setback from the property line, the minimum is required for the small-town is 15 feet. Ours is going to be 30. For the side setback along the perimeter, it's 8 feet, and we're going to be meeting that requirement. And the side setback along the driveway side where the two driveways come together is 10 feet, and ours are going to be 16 feet. So we'll have a total between the two houses of 32 feet. And then finally, as we discussed, the minimum lot width for the small-town character district is 60 feet. The minimum requirement for a PUD is 30 feet, and my lots will be 57 feet. And that's because the total lot is 114. I can only get 57 out of it. It's the best I can do. I did want to point out also that the two lots immediately next door to mine at 312 North Mason and 310 North Mason are 50 feet wide, as Liz mentioned. So this is going to fit in very nicely with what's already there. It'll be smaller than the 60 feet, but it'll also be larger than the two adjacent lots that are there. And also, I wanted to point out that we're keeping the density very low. The maximum density for the small-town district is six, and the density calculation for this development is 3.54, so we're way below the maximum there. And other than that, I just have a picture of each house, and I've listed the various architectural and design features that I've incorporated into each one. So that's house number one, and that's house number two. And that's, that's really all I have to add. Are there any other concerns or questions that I can answer?
No questions, believe it or not. All right. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Liken.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know how to call.
You can just leave it.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And now I'd like to open the public hearing, and we have two folks who have signed up to speak. Brian Johnson. And as you're coming, let me just remind you, we have the green-yellow-red light system, so keep an eye on that while you're presenting. And state your name and address as you begin.
Brian Johnson. I reside at 315 North Mason Street, the aforementioned house across the street. I will be brief. I'm not here to offer anything revolutionary other than maybe a somewhat educated opinion. I am an architect registered in the state of North Carolina. I am here to speak in support of the proposed rezoning. I do feel that this would be a positive contribution to our neighborhood. For those of you that may not be aware, if you look at the short span of North Mason Street between the subject property and the building that we're in right now, there's four properties, all of which have either abandoned or uninhabited houses or commercial buildings. So this, my opinion, would really move towards kind of helping to revitalize that stretch of North Mason Street, which is, if you also don't know, very heavily trafficked from a vehicular sense. The subject properties in question are all very aged, they're all dilapidated, nobody's living in them, so we really need some sort of revitalization for that, for that stretch of our road. I have heard some concerns about the, you know, trying to maintain the larger lots. My opinion is that a half-acre lot in a downtown urban environment... My opinion is that a half acre lot in a downtown urban environment is large. The majority of residential developments that are going up in Apex now are nowhere near half an acre. And they're much more what I would call suburban than I think the subject property, which, given its proximity to downtown Apex, and we are only two blocks kind of east of the main strip, we're downtown or very shortly will be. So I think that should be considered as part of this application. Excuse me. I do also think that this proposed development is consistent with a lot of the more recent developments that have gone in, specifically down Tomstall Avenue, if you're familiar with those. The character, the lot size, the proportion of the lot size is very consistent with, if you take a look at the, basically the five blocks between the subject property and 55, the proposed rezoning is very consistent with some of the existing lot sizes that are already there. And I understand that was pre, you know, some of these new development ordinances that were put into effect, but it should be part of the consideration. And lastly, I just, I mean, this would, we really need some more people getting, living on our street. It's very heavily trafficked by vehicles. It'd be nice to have some more pedestrian activity. We do get a lot of people walking down, you know, towards downtown, but to get some more people kind of living and kind of revitalizing some of these empty properties would be appreciated by the neighbors.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. And also now I'll call Sean Urrig.
Hello. I'm Sean Urrig. I reside at 312 North Mason Street and it's the property right next door to the aforementioned property. I just wanted to express my support for the project. My wife and I live at 312, the property next door. Jill has gone out of her way with the neighbors in the community to lay out her plan. We really appreciate her adherence to trying to keep all the old growth trees. They're very old. I think one of them's over 100 years old. So they're really large oaks. One of them shades my house, so that's one of my reasons why I'm for it. The setback on that she having is 60 feet. The current property, I think right now, the house actually sits back almost that far. And it's, the current house is three feet from my side, like the fence. So what she's proposing to build will be no different for me. It is a two-story property. Her footprint of the houses that she's intending to build, what she gave us in the plans are about 45 to 30 feet, which is the same footprint as mine. So the fact that she wants to have a two-story, I'm fine with that. But the house itself isn't going to be much larger than the house I'm currently in. We're in the process of revitalizing the front end of our house so that we have a nice front porch and stuff. And she's going to add to that. And so to follow up with what Brian had said, it's just going to give more character to the street. There's an abandoned gas station or something two doors down. And then there's, I think the town has the empty lot next door that they have plans for, but right now the street looks kind of dead. And so we're hoping to have a little bit more of that small town character by having people live there and having more of a neighborhood. So thanks for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Urrig. All right, that concludes our list for public hearings. So I will close the public hearing and refer the matter back to counsel for a possible motion.
Motion approved?
I'll second.
All right, motion is second for approval. Any discussion?
Well, I'll say the new elevations that we're looking at, I think I like them a whole lot better than what I saw before. It almost looked like a duplex situation. So thank you for moving them back. I think that all consideration taken in, I think this is a very good project at this point. I wasn't so sure before, quite frankly. But you've done an excellent job. The developer's done an excellent job, I think, of making this fit in very nicely. I still have a little concern about going down the street and seeing subdivisions, but this is right alongside, like I said, 50-foot lots or whatever it was. And next to town owned property, I believe, we owned the gas station, don't we? And if I can remember that far back. So I'm very satisfied with it.
So you've broadened your view on narrow lots?
No, I haven't. It's semi-narrow lots now. I mean, 57 feet versus 60, I'll take a 7% reduction or whatever it is.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion for approval?
I think, given everything that we heard tonight and your responsiveness to people in the neighborhood meeting responding related to the trees, the privacy, the noise concerns, the way you handled that, it's impressive to me. It means that you will be a good neighbor to them as you're developing the property. So I think that's all I need to say for that.
All right.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. Thank you for your extra attention to all of that. Right, I think you were looking for me. Yeah, no, great job on the setbacks going way over and above and saving those trees and making adjustments where necessary. Because when you ride down that street or walk, it will essentially not look much different. With, you know, you're going to have nicer houses, I think, back there. It's going to look nice and it's going to add to the revitalization of that strip for sure. So fantastic. And I would also like to make a comment to staff about the small town character overlay district having a minimum of six units per acre. We might want to look at that. If we had a project come in with six units an acre, I think that would kind of be heartburn for a lot of us up here, so.
I completely agree. I think the level of attention to, you know, preserving the trees, making sure that you're going around them and making it fit with this area is wonderful. So thank you.
All right, thanks. I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Liken. So that takes us to public hearing number four. This is continued from July 17th, rezoning application number 17 CZ 20, the Roberts Crossing PUD and presenting tonight, Amanda Bunce.
Okay. So this is the Roberts Crossing PUD rezoning. This property is located on the west side of Roberts Road, just north of Jinks Road. The properties are mostly wooded. There are three single-family homes located on the properties closest to Roberts Road. The area to be rezoned is about 35 and a half acres. It's currently zoned rural residential, as is most of the zoning surrounding the area to be rezoned across Roberts Road is the Town of Cary's planning jurisdiction, long-range planning jurisdiction, but it's in Wake County's jurisdiction now, and it's owned R40W. The proposed zoning is a planned unit development conditional zoning. The 2030 land use map designates this area as medium density residential, which is consistent with the proposal, which includes a mix of single-family and townhome uses with a maximum density of 4.7 dwelling units per acre. I would like to point out that the long-range plans that the Town of Cary has for this area across Roberts Road is fairly consistent, in fact, allows more density than what our current land use map permits and promotes a range of densities and housing types. Also to be considered is that the alternatives for the advanced Apex process for land use in this area includes a recommendation to increase residential density to, from the medium density classification to the medium high density classification. So as we're going through that process, it is something to consider. So we recognize this area is a prime location for infill development and higher densities that are near thoroughfares and commercial centers. So I wanted to point out those two distinctions. As I said before, the applicant is proposing single-family and townhomes as permitted uses in addition to Greenway and Parks. The minimum lot width should, single-family detached, be the use of 50 feet with a minimum lot area of 5,000 square feet and average lot area of 6,000 square feet. And minimum lot widths have been established for townhome uses that are fairly typical of what we see in Apex. I will say this development has a unique condition that's been added to try to address the affordable housing issue that exists in this area. And I'm going to read this because this is unique. Where economy housing is housing that can be purchased by a household that earns approximately the median household income for Wake County, Roberts Crossing PUD will address economy housing by providing at least 5% of all townhome units as one-car garage units that are at least 18 feet wide and are at least 15% smaller than the average townhome unit as measured by unit width. These economy units will be mixed throughout the development and will not be restricted in sales. The PUD plan proposes to provide a minimum of 25% of the total areas RCA with an additional 2% to be provided if mass grading is proposed in a single-family detached subdivision. For buffers, generally speaking, the buffers are equal to what the UDO requires or more opaque. Along the southern boundary here, there is a 20-foot type A buffer that is proposed and in this vicinity here. 100-foot type A buffer along 540. 20-foot type B in this location. Along the north is a 20-foot type A. And then along Roberts Road is a 30-foot type B. The architectural standards proposed are fairly typical of what we see. I will point out as far as a raised foundation, at least 70% of single-family detached units shall have a crawl space or a raised slab. And then any that are slab-on-grade will be, provide a downstairs master bedroom. And then there's a commitment for both single-family and townhome uses to provide conduit for the future insulation of rooftop solar panels. The proposed PUD is consistent with the Apex Transportation Plan. Traffic impact analysis was conducted for this property. Now, at the planning board meeting, there was a lot of concern expressed by people who own property in the area about traffic, especially stemming since the high school opened up recently, the new high school at Roberts and Green Level Church Road. But it is important to point out that the TIA that was used for this PUD assumed a very aggressive traffic growth in the background condition and did account for green level high school traffic as well as traffic from 17 other adjacent developments. There will be left turn lanes required at the full movement access, which aligns with Trelawney. And then a right-in, right-out access point must be provided at least 500 feet from this main intersection, generally in this location. The planning board heard this item at their, staff is recommending approval of this rezoning. The planning board heard this on July 9th and voted to recommend approval with the conditions proposed by the applicant, but didn't want to include a note to the town council to consider requiring an update to the traffic impact analysis because the high school opened on Roberts Road since the original TIA was completed. But as I previously stated, that TIA did account for the high school's traffic. Staff believes that the proposed rezoning is reasonable in the public interest because it will allow for more variety and permitted residential uses in an area that is appropriate for infill residential development. The rezoning is also in the public interest in that it provides for a percentage of townhomes constructed to be smaller in order to provide a more affordable housing option in Apex. The rezoning includes conditions that will maintain the residential character and appearance of the area and provide flexibility to accommodate growth in the population in the town. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. I do know that the applicant has two additional zoning conditions that will be offered when he presents.
Yeah, okay, I don't want to jump in. I guess number one, you said it didn't require a traffic study. Traffic studies are required if there's 1,000, if I'm correct, 1,000 trips per day, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this one I noticed had 976 trips per day. And from that, I was looking at the subdivision plan. I think staff said it was 156 houses in this, is that correct? I noticed on the site plan, there's 153 houses.
That site plan was conceptual at the time of the neighborhood meeting and has not been submitted to staff for review. All we have is this PUD sheet, the PUD plans that you have before you. Yeah, it's, the 168 townhomes were assumed in the TIA.
168, okay. So that takes, that was going to be my question. I wanted to know where it was because you're really close to that 1,000 trips per day. Stormwater, I didn't see any enhancement. Maybe they're going to make an enhancement to that. But we just heard a subdivision plan where they enhanced the stormwater to 25-year stormwater management. Was any of that discussed?
That was not discussed with the applicant.
Okay. Did the developer agree to the southbound left turn lane that staff recommended?
The applicant has included in the PUD the recommendations from staff from the traffic impact analysis.
All right.
Regarding pedestrian, I noticed in the plan, there were a lot of sidewalks on the roads. But on Roberts Road, I was thinking about, are the kids going to walk to the high school? And I was noticing at least the bridge was narrow over 540. And I'm not sure, can you tell me what the, what's going to be built on the side of the road on Roberts? And then like, is there a plan to, you know, enable more pedestrian friendliness in that area?
Sidewalks will be required, at least a sidewalk along Roberts Road. I don't have the map handy to know if there's a multi-use path or anything, but there will at least be a sidewalk along this side of Roberts Road. I can't speak to what the cross-section includes on the bridge.
It looked nerdy to me and I was disappointed when I was on the Google map.
Yeah, typical sections for the NC DOT bridges don't actually include sidewalk, they include wide shoulder. So you'd have to go back in and do an analysis and design to provide that sidewalk. But there's also a missing link of sidewalk, you know, north of the site. So you're not really going to be able to actually walk on a sidewalk even to get to that point with this site. And we don't have any plans at this time as a town to build a sidewalk extension. That could change in the future. You know, as sites get developed and we have schools nearby, you've seen in past projects where we've connected multi-use paths and sidewalks, so we can always consider that in the future.
Okay.
And if I have anything to do with it, we will.
Yeah.
Just like the Olive Chapel Road, right? Sidewalk over the bridge. That didn't get built, but we're going to do that. And we've made it part of our future plans that if there's going to be a bridge that DOT is building anywhere in our town, we're going to do what we have to to get pedestrian crossing across.
And the Roberts Bridge is similar to the existing Olive Chapel Bridge?
I would think so, yes.
So you can, okay, so.
I would think we would do the same, we would do the same project that we're doing now, yeah.
Too bad that it wasn't done wider originally. I guess that was a wrong thing.
It is. That's right, we know how to fix it now.
Okay, yeah.
Could you restate the percentage of affordable units that were being provided?
Yeah, so it assumes, let me turn to the page, don't want to misstate. So it's 5% of all townhome units will be essentially smaller. They'll have a one-car garage and will be 15% smaller. So in turn, will be more affordable than the other units within the development.
I missed that. How many townhome units are there going to be?
Well, the maximum density is 4.7 units per acre. So it's approximately 150-some. I don't have that precise number handy.
These are all townhomes?
It could be single-family. Obviously, if it was single-family, more than likely that number's going to be less. Townhomes, so this economy housing condition is geared toward a townhome development.
So I guess we can figure eight affordable houses in this development for 150. Eight affordable houses for 150 houses.
Approximately.
Thank you. That was just a question I had.
Anything else for Ben?
And it's assumed in this area that the density is just going to increase. That's, is that correct?
It is assumed. The Town of Cary's future land use plan, which was recently updated, and even our current plan, notwithstanding what was proposed in advanced Apex, is to basically fill in this area. You have single-family, you have residential development surrounding it. This parcel map, more of this has been subdivided since this is the Greenmore subdivision. And so we do anticipate that this will eventually fill in with development over time. It is east of 540, it's fairly close to commercial centers and major thoroughfares. So those are areas where you would typically see infill development.
So does that mean then that the 5% would go down when that happens? Would the 5, I mean, would it, in effect, if this neighborhood grows, that would be 5%? It wouldn't be 5% anymore, it would be less than that?
Well, the 5% is based on the number of units in this development.
Okay, so you're talking about growth around it, not that this particular development would be, would grow. would be, would grow?
Correct.
Okay.
You had mentioned earlier being medium-to-medium-high density throughout this area, which makes sense, it's right along 540, so.
I got it.
All right, thanks Amanda. Does the applicant wish to speak, or representative thereof?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Stuart Jones, Jones and Kinnonson Engineering, 221 North Salem Street, Suite 1. I'm here tonight.
That's a good way of saying, you live in the basement.
I'm in the basement, yes.
Suite 1.
Here tonight representing the developer, James Tucker, and the existing property owners on Roberts Road. Thanks to staff for working with us on this rezoning application, it's been a little, a bit of a journey through this project. We do have two new conditions, and I'm just going to read those, Amanda does have a copy of these. The first one is if there is a community building for this project that requires or installs HVAC equipment and is located in an area designated on the master subdivision plans as an amenity center or HOA common area, then that facility shall provide an active solar PV system that generates at least 3 kilowatts of energy. The second new condition is the developer shall provide a six-foot-high decorative wood fence along the southern property line, adjacent to properties with the following pin numbers, and I won't read all those pins out, but I can point to these five properties along the southern property line. This fence shall be part of the Type A buffer, and the landscape plan for the buffer shall include the fence installation. The fence will only follow the southern property line moving in a general east-west direction, and the finished side of the fence shall face the adjacent properties to the Just a few key points about Roberts Crossing, property is located adjacent to 540, it is near shopping center, so it's a good location for higher-density, single-family, or townhome residential uses. The property is located across Roberts Road from a current Town of Cary proposed townhome project. We're providing a list of conditions to ensure the architectural character of the neighborhood. Overall, density is limited to 4.7 units per acre. We've increased the buffer density along the north and south sides to be 20-foot Type A buffers. We are providing a 100-foot Type A buffer along 540. We are providing a condition to install conduits for future solar installation. And I do want to take a minute to address the economy housing condition. This condition was created by Jones and Kinnonson and the developer to help address affordable housing in this area. The target demographic is the median household income level for Wake County, not Apex, but Wake County, and that's a big difference. The theory behind the condition is to control the price point of the economy units by limiting the size of the unit. If the cost per square foot is the same in each unit, this will drop the economy units down into a more affordable category. And we did put in the stipulation that these units would be mixed throughout the project, so they won't be isolated, set apart, you know, they'll be mixed into the project. And just as a reminder, we are consistent with the 2030 land use map. Planning staff is recommending approval, and planning board was unanimous in recommending approval. We've listened to the neighbors, we've worked with staff as we prepared the PUD application, and we've adapted the conditions to best meet the needs of the town and the developer. We really appreciate your support on this rezoning, and be glad to answer any questions. Traffic engineer is also here, if you have any specific questions about that. And we weren't required to do a traffic full TIA, but we did do a traffic study letter that, it was 30 pages of traffic information. Be glad to answer any questions.
I have a question, if you'd like.
Yeah.
In the, on the west side of this project, kind of right where that arrow is pointing, it looks like there's a piece of property that was included in this assembly, it looked like it might have been landlocked and kind of worthless if it wasn't for this development. Do you have some history on kind of that property?
Yeah, that property's been in the family for generations, and it is landlocked, there's nothing on it, so there's a, you know, a family history there, they live, now live in Durham, but this brings some value to them, you know, by being able to be incorporated into the project. The backside of this project is, got two streams going through it, so it's got, we've got it designated as RCA and buffer area, so a lot of it can't be developed anyway, but it, it does bring value to the whole parcel because it can be included in the whole project.
Anything else? Anyone else?
How much, how much of the normal house townhome's going to cost?
Well, we don't have a builder in tow at this point in time, just a developer, and so what we've tried to do is work through typical examples of what a townhome would cost, and then we kind of backed into, you know, what, what happens if we build a single-car townhome that's 15% smaller and you take the same price per square foot, and all of a sudden that unit, the typical unit now drops down to a level that can meet that Wake County median. So we started with a townhome, just for my example, was about $320,000, and you drop the 15% down, you go to the one-car garage, same cost per square foot, and you're down in the 260 range, which hits on that median Wake County income level.
Well, Wake County's median is 66.5.
Apex is as close to 80, right?
So, and housing costs shouldn't be more than a third of your income, so you can kind of back it up that way.
Right.
So, so thank you, I appreciate your responsiveness related to affordable housing, and also related to being inclusive and diverse throughout instead of people being isolated, and just being able to do that, so I appreciate some of those. I'd love to see more affordable housing, and I'd love to see higher percentages, but thank you for this start.
We hope this is the beginning.
I'd like to echo what you say as well, I do appreciate that, and we need to see more of that, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions for Stuart, then we'll open the public hearing. All right, thank you Stuart. And this time I have three people who have signed up, Alan Hoffler, Harold Meader, and Mike Smith, so we'll take them in that order. Alan Hoffler, author of Presentation Sins, so we're watching you as you speak.
Don't take too many notes on that. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm Alan Hoffler, representing my wife and I, we own the property at the corner of Jinks and Roberts, on the southeast side of the property, we share the property. I was not aware that we had opted in to the presumed growth, but thank you for the heads-up, that I'll be selling for that in sometime in the future. My wife grew up at the other end of Jinks Road, they have six generations of Apex and Western Wake County in their family. They know what we all know, that Apex is a great place to live, they just found it out 100 years before the rest of us. I've only been here 27 years, so I've only seen Apex grow tenfold in size since I've been here. This changes the complexity or the nature of this area. The 11 homes around this property of this proposed development average about 2 and 1/2 acres each. We buy that property because we want to live on large land, the existing homeowners have three-acre plots with a 26, 30-acre forest, and that'll change, that's fine. We have been trained in Southern gentility, we'll welcome our new neighbors if it comes to that. Our primary concern is traffic, my children are one of the cars, probably 1,000 cars going each day to Apex High School, that's a lot. I'm also concerned about foot traffic. I will say the developer and staff have been very, very helpful and easy to work with, they did concede the fence because what looks like a vacant lot to these 165, 168 new homeowners is in fact private property, and we do not wish for liability and security reasons to have them walking across. I'm not aware of plans for a sidewalk along Roberts Road, we are within walking distance to Food Line, Walgreens, suspect there will be significant pedestrian traffic coming that way, this is a very busy section, and I would just ask you to take consideration to the traffic, both four-wheeled and two-footed traffic that will be generated by this project. We're asking you to preserve the quality of life of large tract owners, we understand the nature of the beast, that it is increasing density, and we're willing to welcome that, but we would ask you to take consideration for those of us that choose to invest significantly in our properties, and would like to preserve that type of property. Right across the fence, I may not want to see solar panels, but we're grateful for the Type A instead of a Type B buffer, and in 20 years when that actually grows up to that height, we'll enjoy that buffer. Thank you for what you do to preserve Apex as a wonderful place to live. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hoffler. Harold Meader.
Hello, my name's Harold Meader, I live at 700 Old Castrol Drive, which is in that corner here, right in there. We've lived there for 30 years and have enjoyed the rural area, and we're concerned a bit with the density that's being suggested, for, I think four houses per acre, something like that, and I don't know that it really fits into the current density which is rural. And, but on the other hand, I understand that we need affordable housing, and I'd like to suggest that we stick with what was proposed in the neighborhood meeting a year ago, where the suggestion was down that there would be single home, single-family homes towards the south, and transitioning to more dense dwellings towards the north and west. That would give us a bit of a buffer and maybe fit better into the current environment. I welcome the fence along the south side here, I'm not sure why it doesn't go down this side as well, especially since this area is quite tight and would have less area to make buffers, and so I would hope that there's going to be a similar fence down the side of the property. The fence will help in establishing boundaries, people will maintain their side of the fence, and will also prevent shortcuts through private property. I'm concerned about drainage, this development's going to wipe out a lot of forest canopy, I mean, the pictures we saw of the proposed homes, I didn't see a tree. And I'm concerned that we're a little downhill from the property, so I'm hoping that something will be done to ensure that the drainage goes down to the existing watershed down in this area, and not through, through properties here where we already have drainage problems. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to raise my concerns, and, that's about it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meader. Mike Smith.
Mayor, councilors, thank you for listening, I'm not a citizen of Apex or of Cary, I live at 105 Trelawney Lane, right across the street from the proposed opening to Roberts Crossing. We know there's going to be development, our concern, of course, is density and traffic. You all know better than I do that it's one of your powerful levers on development, as you all face the great future of Apex. The traffic study that's referenced in the town papers and the plans was done in June 2017, as one councillor noted, was 24 trips short of the threshold for a required TIA. Approving this project obviously passes that threshold, but my concern, and the neighbors' concern, is the traffic engineers have said that they project 3% growth and possibly 4,000 trips in the future along Roberts Road. We're here to tell you that much of that future is here now. If the study had been done in the fall of 2017, the numbers would be very different at peak. Going to school, school lunches, school is out, the peak is something that no one has an actual count of, so we urge you to rethink and require a new traffic study. I think it would help in your understanding and approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council for discussion leading to a possible motion.
Are we able to ask questions of staff again?
Yes, if you have a question.
So I'm looking at that little sliver on the west side, so it looks like part of that is watershed and will never be developed because it's part of the RCA, correct? And then there's, so, that little rectangle, half of it looks like it's out, okay, yeah, like this picture?
Yes.
Okay, so, we don't have any plan necessarily for how they intend to use the remaining section, right?
Right, we have no subdivision layout, the PUD sheets, oh, it's difficult to see here, do anticipate approximate future stubout locations to adjacent properties if and when they redevelop in the future, but we have no general layout of the area at this time.
Okay.
Where's the, okay, so, I think that, Mr. Jones might have mentioned the RCA is kind of that south portion there.
Yes, so you can see the stream that bisects the property here and this way, so essentially all of this area will be RCA, and they are maintaining the existing pond in this location, which will also be designated as RCA.
And the, the Food Line, the Walgreens and everything farther down?
Uh, yes, that's.
Have a bigger picture there?
Down this way, can zoom back to here, so this is the Food Line Shopping Center with its out parcels, and then the Walgreens and Aldi are here.
And what's the purple dotted line on this?
That is the municipal agreement line, so this is basically the boundary between us and Cary.
And Cary's proposed on that, it's Wake County land currently, right, but they're, it's their jurisdiction, I guess, if it ever gets rezoned?
Yes, if it ever develops with, and needs water and sewer services from Cary, it is in their future planning area, and it's designated on their plan as traditional neighborhood, which provides for a mix of housing types and a range of densities that's greater than our current medium-density residential classification.
Which is greater than six units per acre?
Yeah, it allows up to, not that it will necessarily be approved. There is a rezoning that's in right now and reviewed, going to public hearing in the next month or so for townhomes in this location.
And north of this project is a historical property?
There is a historic home that was moved here a few years ago, that, I want to say it's on this parcel.
Yeah, we proved it, right?
About a five-acre tract of land with a beautiful historic home on it, that's for sale if anybody wants to buy it.
Oh, yeah?
So the traffic study that was done, that took into account the high school, and how many neighborhoods in that area?
I believe 17 adjacent developments, so there's been a lot of residential development in this area, and those were reflected in the traffic counts in that traffic letter that was written, and applicant's traffic engineer is here if you have questions.
I guess, follow on it, maybe the traffic engineer will have to answer this, but did that traffic study include this development in itself, or was it just the developments that were under construction?
You mean the proposed development?
Yeah, this proposed development, was that included in the traffic study as, at this density of 150 houses?
168 townhomes, that's.
168 townhomes. That's what they did as part of the traffic study. So they have, of course, an existing condition.
No, wait a minute, not, okay, the old traffic study that we're basing this on.
The old traffic-
Whatever it was. We're not doing it, we're not doing a traffic study, and in part, isn't it the way I understand it?
Oh, I know-
On a previous traffic-
No, there's no previous, sorry, let me clear that up. So there, the threshold is 100 peak hour or 1,000 daily. So this proposal is just under that threshold. So according to our UDO, they don't have to do a traffic impact analysis. But, you know, in part because it's close to the threshold, and also, you know, they have access where we're looking at things like left turn lanes, we asked for a traffic memorandum, which is basically, it's like a traffic impact analysis, except the difference is they're not studying anything off-site. They're just studying their points of access. So, you know, they do the same process. It's, you know, existing conditions. It's background, which in this case is 3% growth to their build-out year, plus the high school, plus 17 approved developments. So it's a lot of additional growth, and then they've got to build out with their traffic added on to it. But the analysis is just for their full movement at across from Trelawney, and they're riding right out. Now, there is some concern I've heard about before we get any questions about that. The signal, the future signalized intersection to the south at Jinks Road and Roberts Road, and that is a traffic signal that's committed by the Greenmore Development as part of their last plat. So, and that is going to be forthcoming there. I think they're just about to get to their last plat now, and that signal is being designed. So that would handle that off-site concern, which I've heard before, is that's trapped, that intersection's very busy, that traffic signal will address that. Now, with this, again, they're not, we're not required to do a traffic impact analysis per our UDO, but they did study their points of access. There's plenty of capacity at those points of access. They would not be required to do any improvements off-site at that signalized intersection, nor would they need to based on what's proposed here. So is that clear enough?
How many of you are in the development that did the traffic study? Do you recall?
Well, oh, for the Greenmore Development? Greenmore was 300 homes, I think? Yeah, yeah, they were a lot, yeah, they were a pretty large development. And they had additional background, too. I mean, all this is getting lumped on. Greenmore's part of this, too. All these developments get lumped together. So it provides a pretty conservative assumption when you add all this traffic together because it doesn't really take into account some of the capture between these uses when they actually get on the ground, because you're not going to just have, it's not like you have these individually generating traffic. I mean, there's going to be some traffic between the subdivisions, between the high school and the subdivision. So if anything, it's probably overestimating traffic on Roberts Road in this case, if that makes any sense. I mean, I think it'll be lower, at least for their build-out year. Now, they're not analyzing traffic 20, 30, 40 years from now. They're analyzing for their build-out, and that's what they're responsible for as far as their improvements.
Is there a sidewalk on the section of their property that they're developing?
Yeah, they'll be required to construct sidewalk along their frontage. That's correct.
The edge of their properties, right?
Yes, yeah, and in the future, if the town, you know, identifies a need in funding to extend sidewalk off-site, you know, that is normally what we look at if we see, if we see that kind of need, you know, in the future.
So, given the high school and the pedestrian traffic and the cars, you know, I still remain concerned about that based on the folks who we're talking about who live in this and with what we've dealt with with the other high school that we've just been doing the walk audit for. So, you know, I'm just trying to figure out now what we can do. If they can't do a TIA, then what are the things that we can do, especially given the high school is?
Well, as far as off-site goes, I mean, even if, for this number of units, even if they did look at off-site impacts, for instance, their traffic is so low, they're not going to be required to install left turn lanes off-site. They're just not going to meet that threshold based on the amount of traffic they're generating. It wouldn't change their recommendations as far as requirements for off-site sidewalk because we don't have, we can't require developers, you know, as part of a traffic study to build off-site sidewalk just because there's a school nearby.
Amanda, can you remind me the buffer that's listed for the southern part on the east side?
There's a 20-foot type A buffer in this vicinity.
The whole, the whole way?
Yes. And then the condition that was just added is a fence to be added to that buffer in this location.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion is second for approval. Discussion on the motion.
I have trouble with this, if I may step in just briefly. I think it was mentioned by one of the people, neighbors, about drainage. And the, when we do a planned unit development, we step back from the subdivision requirements with the thought that the planned unit development is going to step forward in other areas. And I don't see where this is really stepped forward. They're not looking to do any enhanced stormwater management, and we just looked at a development that is doing way beyond stormwater management. They're talking about putting 3 kilowatts of solar on a community building. I almost had trouble not smiling because the previous development is going to do 27 kilowatts across nine houses. And this community building may never be built. So it, I feel like we're getting thrown bones instead of meat. The 5% low-income housing, I tried to figure out what those houses would probably cost based on what was said, probably $270,000. I don't know. I could well be wrong, but it just doesn't seem like what we're hearing is really meat. I feel like it's bones. And when I look at the legislative considerations, I look at number five, design minimizes environmental impact. I don't see it. I don't see it at all. So from that standpoint, I'm certainly going to vote against this.
Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to say, I mean, I appreciate the developer stepping up and doing this affordable housing. It's the first one that we've seen in Apex. Although I believe the market will take care of itself. I appreciate this developer going over and above to do that. I've talked about the solar conduit run to the roof down to the electrical box and letting the homeowner decide whether they put solar panels on. That's a personal choice that people can make. And, you know, if a builder does it, all it does is drive up the end cost. So I appreciate him, you know, putting that in there and letting the end user decide. But I appreciate everything that this developer's done in this area.
I don't have much to add to what I said earlier. I do want to remain in touch related to the price, since we didn't get the price. And with the median of 66.5, you know, that doesn't get us to 270. But that's Mr. Jensen's math, but I would like to remain in touch with you related to that. If this goes.
All right. Are there any other discussions, or shall I call for the vote? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
I counted, I'm sorry, you voted no?
And I voted yes.
Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, 4-1. I know, I was not sure. All right, 4-1, okay. I apologize. All right, thank you very much. That passes. And I will, if there's no objection, call for a 10-minute recess at this time.